Good morning. Happy Valentine's Day. This public hearing conducted by the Committee on Education, Public Safety and the Arts is hereby called to order at 9:05 Tchomor Standard Time. Notice of the hearing was disseminated to all local media outlets on February 7, 2024, with the second notice provided on February 12, 2024. Notice of the hearing was also made known on the Guam Legislature's website and the government of Guam Public Notices Portal. This morning, the Committee on Education, Public Safety and the Arts will hear testimony on Bill Number 196-37 LS, an act to add a new subsection 3223 Article 2 of Chapter 3, Title 17, Guam Code Annotated, relative to implementing mandatory first aid and CPR certification for Guam Department of Education employees and volunteers. This measure was sponsored by the Committee on Maritime Transportation, Air Transportation, Parks, Tourism, Higher Education, and the Advancement of Women, Youth, and Senior Citizens by request of Congressman Manho Ben Guahan, the Guam Youth Congress, in accordance with 2 GCA Subsection 7102. Upon conclusion of Bill Number 196-37 LS, we will then hear testimony on Bill Number 211-37 COR, which is an act to add a new subsection 3223 to Article 2 of Chapter 3, Title 17, Guam Code Annotated, relative to prioritizing access to federal financial assistance through the completion of the free application for federal student aid, FAFSA, by the Guam Public High School senior, sponsored by Senators Amanda L. Shelton, Roy A. B. Canata, Jesse A. Luhon, William A. Parkinson, Dwayne T. D. Sannicolas, Joe S. Senn Augustin, Christopher M. Duñez, and Thomas J. Fisher. And after discussions on Bill Number 211-37 COR conclude, we'll take a short recess before we hear testimony on the appointment of Paul B. Mendiola as member of the governing board of the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities, and the appointment of Angie R. Taidegui as Director of CAHA. I'd like to now welcome my colleagues joining us today, Speaker Teri Sturlahi to my left and to my right, Senator Amanda Shelton. We'll now proceed with discussions on Bill Number 196-37 LS. I'll begin by giving the floor to Senator Shelton. Good morning, Senator Shelton.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much for this public hearing today on Bill 196-37 and the opportunity to offer introductory remarks. Bill 196-37 is an act to add a new Section 3223 Article 2 of Chapter 3, Title 17, Guam Code Annotated, relative to implementing mandatory first aid and CPR certification for Guam Department of Education employees and volunteers. Bill 196-37 was introduced at the request of the 34th Guam Youth Congress. It requires the Guam Department of Education employees, contractors, and volunteers to complete training in first aid and CPR within six months of their initial employment or service with the department. The GYYC bill strengthens DOE's ability to address medical emergencies, including but not limited to choking, allergy attacks, bleeding, and a long list of other incidents that may occur as a result of an accident, sport activity, school fight, or other event involving any of the 25,000-plus students in our 41 public schools. The bill requires current staff members to complete first aid and CPR training within one year following enactment, and all employees and volunteers must renew their training certification for two years. Recognizing DOE has been working on a pilot first aid and CPR training program, Bill 196 may help the department establish or strengthen existing partnerships with other agencies and community organizations that are equipped and prepared to meet the training needs of our public school system. The American Red Cross of Guam offers lifesaving training programs, and in 2022 alone, the organization provided 234 courses to first aid, CPR, automated external defibrillators, and water safety instructors, which led to the certification of 1,664 individuals. Although GDOE nurses are able to provide first aid and CPR training, additional instructors will be needed to train over 2,500 faculty members, administrators, and support personnel. According to the bill's fiscal note, without an appropriation by the legislature, the Bureau of Budget and Management Research anticipates GDOE would have to commit $500,000 from its current budget to provide first aid and CPR training in the first year of implementation. Bill 196-37, as drafted, complements other potentially lifesaving legislation this 37th Guam Legislature supported and the governor enacted within the past seven months, including Public Law 37-25, which was authored by you, Mr. Chair, automated external defibrillators at all GDOE school campuses, and Public Law 37-56 authored by Senator Canata, requiring AEDs in all government of Guam offices. Although both laws did not include appropriations, I believe the legislature and the governor agreed that AEDs and our broader objective of meeting the health care needs of our community with the limited resources we have must be prioritized. And with that, Mr. Chair, I want to thank the Guam Youth Congress for this proactive legislation, which puts the health and safety of their peers and our school personnel at the forefront of public policy discussions. I look forward to their presentation this morning and to working with our colleagues and the 34th Guam Youth Congress, all relevant stakeholders, to move Bill 196 forward. Sisuus Massey.
Thank you very much, Senator Shelton. And with that, we'll begin receiving testimony, and we'll start with the Speaker of the Guam Youth Congress, Ms. Lily Venge. Good morning.
Good morning. Buenos dias. And thank you for this opportunity to be able to speak today. 9:00 AM on a Wednesday morning means I'm the only one able to attend since all of the rest of our representatives are in school at the moment. Today, I'm testifying in support of Bill 196-37 LS, which was introduced in the Guam Youth Congress as Bill 5-34 COR by our chairperson of the Committee on Health and Human Services, Caitlin Galindez. This bill was then voted through our body with unanimous support, showing the united front that we hold on our students' safety. But this bill was really written to emphasize the critical importance of ensuring that educators are equipped with CPR and first aid training. As educators, their responsibility extends outside of the classroom. They're entrusted with the safety and the well-being of all students, and in times of crisis, their actions can make the difference between life and death. Students spend around six hours every day, every day of the week, at school. This makes the possibility of an emergency happening at school much higher and a much scarier thought if teachers don't have the training for an emergency. This CPR training for teachers, staff, and administration is crucial because emergencies can happen anywhere at any time. Whether on the playground, in the cafeteria, or during a field trip, educators are often the first responders of medical emergencies involving the students. It's not always the nurse who reaches the scene first. In these moments, every second counts, and having the knowledge and skills to perform CPR can be the deciding factor in saving a life. I myself have worked two years as an emergency medical responder for the New Jersey Beach Patrol, and have firsthand experience and seen people lose their lives to those around them not knowing CPR. But I've also seen experiences where knowing CPR has saved lives. This is a reality that no one should ever have to face, losing a loved one. Students should be able to attend their school in the safety of knowing that if an emergency were to happen, teachers, staff, and administration should know what to do, not just the school nurse or other students. Most school standards state lifelong learners, and we want this to apply to the ones who are educating us. Learning CPR and getting recertified every two years is not difficult, but it is something that takes steps to do and steps to learn. This bill stands up to provide a safe future for students in a place that they want to deem safe. It is always better to be prepared than be caught off guard, and CPR and first aid training is a skill that can save a life. I would like to thank this committee and Senator Shelton for hearing our request and allowing this bill to be heard by the youth and to express our voice. Sisuus Massey, and thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Venge. Up next, Banuar Kiyawut. Sorry, sir.
Yes, sir. Good morning. Banuar Kiyawut, just filling in for our chief nurse at the moment, here with the superintendent today. I agree with her. I want a better place. I want a safer place. But I think if we mandate this into law, I think it puts a burden on DOE at this point. Where are we going to get the funding for this again? Right? We're cutting in all places now, so it's almost going to cost us $500,000 just for the 2,000 employees. So we're not even talking about the supplies yet, right? So if we do this, it's going to put a big financial burden for the DOE, training this mandatory BLS for all employees. So I also want to point out, if we make this to become a mandatory local law, we're at risk also of losing all our federal grants also for this funding as well. I'll give an example, sir. Sir, the AED, when it became a local law, we lost the federal funding for it because now we have to fund it. It looks like this time, we're also going to fund this if this becomes a local law. Actually, in the bill, it says the DOE is going to fund it, right, sir? That's just one of the things I have with the bill, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I have more questions, too.
Thank you. Mr. Swanson.
Good morning, senators. I couldn't agree more that we need to have as many people as possible trained. And the idea that we're also in the process of putting AEDs on all of our campuses in multiple locations, I was surprised that they weren't there when I first got here. Those are important pieces of information to remember, but the two pieces of legislation create an unfunded mandate in near or in excess of $1 million. Now, if we can find a way to fund that locally, that's great, but that is a real issue. The other side of it is, we're already using our nursing staff to train for CPR and first aid training, and we're training in an average of 200, 250 people a year. That's our capacity that we currently have. So to get near 3,000 employees, and then the language that also calls for, and volunteers and contractors, I really don't know how many people that is, but it's going to be well over 3,000 when you look at the extent that we're on our campuses. We do train to the level that we have four to six people in each campus that are trained, not just the nurse. I absolutely will agree that we need to have more, but we need to find, to make sure that we guarantee a way to fund that appropriately so that we can be sure to deliver the product.
Thank you, Superintendent. Is there anybody else who would like to offer testimony on this bill? Sir?
Sir, just some question with the bill, too. I know the bill is just mandated all. Did you mean, like, all? There is no exclusion of anybody in that bill? So I expect the manomkus as well, or someone that has a disability, to perform the CPR. The CPR class under AHA, by the way, it's very extensive. So what happens for those employees that don't pass the certification as well? Right? And then the timeline that you gave, sir, or the timeline that was given on this bill was almost impossible to meet at that time. We would have to hire four, five full-time employees just to make this number in one year.
All right. I think I'll open it up to questions from the senators present, and I'll defer to the bill's main sponsor. Senator Shelton?
Did you have any questions?
Okay. Speaker Sturlahi?
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony, Speaker, and thank you for your testimony, Superintendent and Mr. Kiyawut. So right now, from what you said, I'm understanding that you have federal funding currently for this and that you're able to certify four to six people per campus every year, or at least 250 total every year, right? And is that correct?
That was last year, ma'am. But this year, we plan to surpass that number, ma'am.
Okay. So you're continuing to receive federal funding? How much funding?
I'm not sure the exact amount of the federal funding that we're getting at this moment, but they were able to provide us with supplies in the past years, but I know we probably have to renew those federal grants as well, ma'am.
Okay. Because you said you might lose funding if we mandate it, and the mandate it, that'd be a locally funded option, and I just wanted to know how much you would lose because the fiscal note doesn't say.
We don't know the exact amount. But for this alone, if this local law was funded, it'd cost us almost $1 million for this. So I'd expect the same thing from the federal funding that we'd lose as well, or maybe more.
All right. The fiscal note says $500,000, but where's the $1 million?
So that's for each employee, it would cost $125,000 each? $125 for CPR card. So that's for the 4,000 that we have. So sustainability of this as well, it's going to continue to increase every year as well, ma'am.
Okay. How many employees do you have? Because the fiscal note says you have 2,500 employees. That's not correct.
No, ma'am. So at this point, around 4,000, roughly over 4,000, ma'am. That does include the volunteers, too.
Okay. So the fiscal note saying it's going to cost $500,000 should actually be doubled to $1 million, right? That's your estimate?
Yes, ma'am. The money there wasn't included with the CPR instructors as well and the supplies in there, in there, ma'am.
What about the AED funding that you lost? How much was that?
Those are roughly $309,000, ma'am.
If we had to mandate, I agree. I mean, the more, the better, of course, the safer. However, if we were to mandate that teachers have to become certified in this, do we have to change their pay? We're paying them right now for the job that they currently are mandated to do. If we change their mandates midstream, do we have to change their pay? Or are they entitled to that? And what, like you said, what if some teachers refuse? Are we allowed then, after we pass this law, to, you know, punish them for not wanting to be certified?
I would be sure, having been through several labor negotiations over the years, that that's going to come up. There'll also be the question about Good Samaritan law that removes them from a position of liability. And based on my experience in other settings with this kind of training, that was a major concern of folks, is that if I intervene to save a life and then I'm not successful, can I be held liable for it?
Yeah. So we do have Good Samaritan laws in place, but I'm also curious, if we change it to a mandatory, this is part of your duty, you're not a Good Samaritan any longer, that's your duty at work. So there's a whole other, I mean, if they're government employees, then they'll be covered by government, you know?
If that becomes a condition of employment, that's a much more complex discussion and certainly worth addressing.
Yeah. And then it's a whole other thing for the volunteers on campus. So maybe I could ask you, Speaker Venge, what volunteers? I mean, the bill says all volunteers on campus, and I just find that we can't allow volunteers on campus without getting them certified in CPR. That seems very impossible, but I don't want to say impossible. I guess I'd just say really hard. We have a hard time getting volunteers as it is, and I can't imagine how we're going to get them if we're requiring them all to go through CPR training. How many, what volunteers are you expecting should know this? And even contractors? The bill says contractors, such as the aircon installment people. I mean, are we going to require them? That's, I guess, what did you intend? Or not your, yeah, what did the sponsors intend?
Though I am not the main sponsor of the bill, the volunteer line really stood out even to show that sport coach volunteers. I mean, that would be an essential place to have someone who is first aid and CPR trained because that's where a lot of accidents can happen. I think that was more of the intent rather than like an aircon repairman. And I think that should be revisited possibly to clarify that, that those who are in the places where this would be essential, that they have that training.
All right. Yeah, I agree with you, and maybe they are already.
Yeah, I just want to add on, all the coaches, we mandate them to all have a CPR certified BLS certification.
I thought so, too. Okay. So maybe we can look at just how we can help to increase the current, your current ability to fund the 250 per year, how we can help you to increase that without you losing your federal funds. And I guess the sponsor of the bill is suggesting that the governor will prioritize the funding on this, but is a bill needed if that was the case? If she had money and she could give you extra, do we need to mandate you to do that, or you already are doing this?
I love the overall goal of the bill, but I think there's a more feasible and, I guess I could say, most beneficial approach to this area. So if you allow the school nurses, the people on the front line, we would love to work with them to work with this bill as well. How we can do it better, we can use an evidence-based practice, things that are already proven that other schools are doing, without mandating everyone to do it. So even at this point, I just want to highlight things that we're doing with DOE now. We're pinpointing which schools have the least certified teachers, and those are the ones that we're targeting first. So I want to highlight that. AEDs are coming on its way, too, by the way, sir. So we are going to have, we plan to implement a rapid response team for each school to respond to those emergencies, ma'am.
Great. Thank you for those efforts. Can I just ask, do you have any data on how many cases you have in the schools that would need, that have needed CPR over the past couple of years?
I have yet to see anything that needed CPR within this school year, but we do have a data that we would show how many 911 calls we had for this school year as well.
And what is your experience with the 911? Do they respond quickly? Because we've certified paramedics now.
Absolutely. Yeah, so they usually would be there within five minutes, depending where the school is, too, ma'am. But the school nurse is there. By the way, all the schools are equipped with all registered nurses here in Guam.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Well, I support the intent of the bill, and we'll see what we can do, and thank you for your efforts. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The Speaker brought up a lot of the points that I had discovered in my research of the bill, but I did have just a few questions. Can you state your name and title for the record, sir?
Buenos dias, sir. So my name is Banuar Kiyawut. I'm the acting chief nurse at the moment for DOE.
Okay. Thank you. So when you said that each school has four to six personnel who are CPR-trained and certified, how do you determine which personnel receive this training?
So at the moment, we want to see where it's more likely to happen. So the admin, we want to see the main office as well. Where it's more likely to happen also is the high-risk areas, which is the PE area. And also, maybe even the coaches, those are the ones that we try to prioritize, ma'am.
So the Speaker had mentioned, you know, whether we need a bill or is this just something we kind of put our heads together and say, how can we increase the number of employees who are receiving the training and certification for CPR? So what would that process look like?
On how we can increase the training?
The numbers of people receiving the training. Would you have to apply for an increase in the grant?
Yes, sir. So definitely increase for the grant, increase for instructors as well, for supplies. Yeah. Yes, sir. And we are in the process of writing our grant applications at this moment, too, sir.
Okay. Mr. Superintendent, I know the question has been asked of if we're going to require the teachers to receive this training, do we then have to go back to the board agreement and modify that and, you know, give an increase in pay, right? So if we're thinking that that's the case with the teachers, I just want to ask for my hard-working, rank-and-file Department of Education employees, would they also be given an increase due to this, you know, an increase in responsibility that they're now having or potentially could shoulder should this bill become law?
I would approach this initially through a voluntary program to get as many people in each department, especially for our maintenance teams. They're out remote in many instances. Some of them are trained, but not all of them. So we're looking at not just this area, but all of the other areas of safety training that we need to do with our folks. So this is something that we can add to it. It's a reasonable expectation. The requirement to have all people certified, that's going to end up in a negotiation situation at some point, I'm sure of that.
Oh, I'm sorry. When you reach out to employees and you do it on a volunteer basis, what is some of the feedback that you get from people who agree to the training and then people who turn it down?
Yeah, so I think the BLS, this is a very rigorous class. So a lot of them would say, do I really have to do it? I'm scared. Even if I am certified, I don't want to do it. That's what the nurses are here for, right? So those are the feedbacks. There's that fear always. There's that fear of, what if I don't pass it as well? Right? So a lot of them are also doing this during class hours at this point for BLS certification, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your testimony. Senator Shelton?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And yes, the Speaker and the Chair touched on a lot of my questions as well. Thank you for being here today, Department of Education, and of course, the Guam Youth Congress. Can you tell us how many of our school nurses are able to train other employees in CPR? Are any of them certified as trainers?
At this point, I think we have about 15 to 20. That's, ma'am, out of 46.
Okay. Because you mentioned needing five additional full-time employees to train all employees within the timeline provided for the bill. If we were not to hire any full-time employees and to use our nurses who are trainers, I know this is an additional burden to them with the workload they already have in the schools, but if we were to use them as the trainers in the schools, how long would you say it would take?
So I calculated this. So for five full-time employees, we would have to do it every day for school day, 180 days. We would have to have 22 students. So for one instructor, I can only have six students. So it's a very strict guideline from AHA, right? So to certify 4,000, it'd almost take us a year with five people nonstop for 180 days to teach that, class, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the time today. Thank you to all those who are in attendance, and be sure to take your comments in this committee report. I'd also like to put on the record if we could request from the Guam Federation of Teachers testimony on, from their perspective, on what this will mean for their unionized employees within the department. Sisuus Massey.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. And I'd also like to hear from the board members, maybe if we could get a testimony input from any of the board members. I know that Senator Shelton just offered her closing, but I would like to recognize my colleague Senator Telo Taidegui. Thank you for joining us. And did you have any questions on the bill, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I apologize for being late, but I'm watching on YouTube so that I don't miss anything that you said, and I've heard all your testimonies earlier. I just have a quick question. Is there anybody in DOE right now that currently holds a certification in CPR that, you know, have been recognized as someone who has it in DOE right now?
That is BLS certified, ma'am?
Yeah.
We have few, ma'am. At this point, I think we have around 300-some certified employees at DOE.
That are CPR certified, right?
CPR certified.
Okay. Are they able to also teach? Do they have that certification?
Sure. So at this point, we have about 20 school nurses that could teach BLS, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. And they're already on the payroll, right? So they can have that extra to be able to provide it. Okay. But I do, my biggest concern is the mandating it and, you know, the repercussions if you don't do it, the same concerns as my other colleagues who were mentioning earlier. But of course, where are you going to find the funding? That's the biggest issue. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and for the opportunity.
Thank you, Senator Taidegui. If there's no further testimony on the bill, we'll conclude this public hearing of Bill Number 196-37, reminding you that you have 10 days to provide testimony to the committee via email at malfunction@guamlegislature.org. We'll now hear testimony on Bill Number 211-37 COR, which is an act to add a new subsection 3223 to Article 2 of Chapter 3, Title 17, Guam Code Annotated. to Article 2 of Chapter 3, Title 17, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Prioritizing Access to Federal Financial Assistance Through the Completion of the Free Application for Federal Student Aid (FAFSA) by Guam Public High School Seniors. This bill is sponsored by Senator Amanda L. Shelton, Senator Roy Canata, Senator Jess Luhon, Senator William A. Parkinson, Senator Dwayne T. DeSenecholles, Senator Joe S. Augustine, Senator Chris M. Duñez, and Senator Tom Fisher. A reminder after discussions on Bill Number 211-37, we're going to take a short recess and hear testimony on the appointment of Paul B. Mendiola to the CAHA Board and Angie R. Taidegui to Director of CAHA. And so again, I'd like to defer to the bill's main sponsor, Senator Shelton, for her opening statement.
Sutus Massey, once again, Mr. Chair, for hearing Bill 211-37 and for the opportunity to introduce the measure. Bill 211-37 is an act to add a new section 3223 to Article 2 of Chapter 3, Title 17, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Prioritizing Access to Federal Financial Assistance Through the Completion of the Free Application for Federal Student Aid (FAFSA) by Guam Public High School Seniors. Mr. Chair, together with Senators Roy Canata, Jesse Luhon, Will Parkinson, Dwayne Sinicholas, Joe Sin Augustine, Chris Duñez, and Tom Fisher, I introduce Bill 211-37, requiring high school seniors, beginning in school year 2025 to 2026, to complete the free application for federal student aid, among other graduation requirements. FAFSA is a free, is free, and the application is available to any student, regardless of income, who wants to be considerable, considered for federal, state, and school financial aid programs. The information submitted with a FAFSA form is used to determine how much financial aid a student may be eligible to receive, which could include grants, scholarships, work-study funds, and loans. Mirroring a similar bill I proposed during the 35th Guam Legislature, Bill 211-37 requires high schools to provide students or their parents or guardians with any support or assistance which may be necessary for them to complete the form. Mr. Chair, just to be clear, this bill includes an opt-out provision for parents and guardians. A parent or legal guardian or a student, if the student is at least 18 years of age, shall certify a waiver in writing to their principal if he or she refuses to complete the FAFSA requirement. Alternatively, a school counselor may authorize the student to decline completion and submission of the financial aid application for compelling cause as determined by the school counselor. Bill 211 authorizes the Guam Education Board to adopt rules for implementing the new FAFSA policy. The decision to seek a degree or certificate program belongs to our students, and Bill 211 is meant to help them take another step toward it if they're serious about considering a post-secondary education. According to the National College Attainment Network, the high school class of 2022 left an estimated $3.6 billion in Pell Grants on the table by not completing a FAFSA. The National College Attainment Network argues that federal financial aid helps make post-secondary education more affordable for millions of students each year, and leaving billions of dollars in unclaimed Pell Grants on the table may limit students' consideration of all post-secondary pathways that may be available to them and their families. 12 states have enacted a FAFSA requirement for high school seniors, including Louisiana, which began with the class of 2018, Illinois in 2021, Alabama and Texas in 2022, and California and Maryland, which implemented their policies just last year. FAFSA requirements in Connecticut and New Hampshire go into effect this year as well, with Indiana, Nebraska, and Oklahoma to follow in 2025 and Kansas in 2028. With respect to those states that have implemented FAFSA requirements, about 58.9% of Alabama's class of 2021 completed a FAFSA, representing an increase of 24.9% completions, or about 6,300 additional applications. Illinois had the highest year-over-year percent change of 65% in school year 2020 to 2021. That's 4,664 additional applications. Louisiana, 7,778 additional completions, and Texas, with its new policy, a rate of 63% increase from about 50%. When we take a look at our local system, the data we received tells us that more can be done to inform high school seniors about FAFSA and encourage the support, to support those who want to pursue degree or certificate programs. Less than half our seniors during the past two school years submitted a FAFSA form. In closing, Mr. Chair, I leave you and those participating in today's public hearing in person or via our legislative or YouTube channels with other relevant data. According to the 2022 Guam Economic Report by Dr. Maria Clarit Ruane at the University of Guam, "The one issue affecting potential employees in Guam continues to be the large number of otherwise employable individuals who do not participate in the labor force." The report stated that as of June 2022, "an estimated 54,200 of working-age individuals, or approximately 35% of Guam's total population, did not participate in the labor force." After excluding retirees, students, and those challenged with childcare or medical issues, the report found approximately 25,000 individuals were potentially employable as of 2022. Dr. Ruane concluded that from an economic perspective, "if 90% of the potentially employable individuals were employed at the average productivity of those currently employed, they would be contributing an additional 37% or more than $2 billion to Guam's $6.1 billion economy." Mr. Chair and colleagues, while I'm aware of some of the questions that have been raised on Bill 211, including whether our government should go this far as to require high school seniors to complete FAFSA as a graduation requirement, the point of this legislation is for students and families to make an informed choice about the paths available to them to pursue and pay for post-high school education. That choice will have an enormous impact, not only on their quality of life, but on the future of our island. And with that, Mr. Chair, I look forward to the discussion today. I know we have DOE here and the Guam Community College, and so I look forward to their discussion points and suggestions to strengthen this bill and move the legislation forward. Thank you.
Sutus Massey, Senator Shelton. We'll now open it up to testimony on the bill. Superintendent, if there's anybody who would like to provide testimony on the bill, please come up and have a seat on the table. Please proceed, Mr. Superintendent.
Good morning, senators. I'd like to speak in support of the bill and just make a couple of very brief comments about some of the other aspects of applying for and receiving financial aid. To be sure, the FAFSA is the key to the door, absolutely. And because without that, applications won't be accepted by most university or community college financial aid departments. The challenges, having put a few kids through college myself, the challenges with the FAFSA, first of all, is having families ready to, first of all, have and understand and track the financial data and be willing to divulge it, because it's a rather invasive process. The second part of that is that that opens the door once it's filed and the university has that information, but getting students to actually apply for the scholarship is another matter entirely. And hence, that's what I've seen in with some of our own folks and in my own family, grants and scholarships that were not applied for because the paperwork involved with doing that is, when you have a senior and those of us who had them know that that, from now till the end of the school year and end of the summer, is an absolute crazy crowded time for everything they're having to do. So it's consideration. I absolutely agree that the cost of education is expensive. I absolutely agree that we can do more to get kids to apply for these programs, but some of the challenges that we face with the students in our schools here locally is some of the family situations are coming out of our, the generated, the statistics that the Senator gave us about how many people are eligible for the labor force and are participating in, those are, those are other bigger issues. This will help. And I would, and we already encourage this process in our schools. It's not a mandate, but it's for it to be a requirement. I don't see the harm in that. I don't know that it's going to change the rate at which students apply for actual financial aid after they do this process, because that's where the results are going to be seen.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Chairwoman Okada, good morning.
How are doing? Good morning. Buenos a menanas, Sutus, Senator Shelton, and members of the Committee on Higher Education, Senator Barnett, Speaker Trelawney, Senator Telo Taidegui, thank you very much for being here. My name is Mary Okada, President of the Guam Community College. I come before you today in support of Bill 211-37, an act to amend a new section 3223, Chapter 3, Title 17, of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to prioritizing access to federal financial assistance through the completion of the free application for federal student aid or FAFSA by Guam Public High School Seniors. I would like to thank you for your leadership in bringing this initiative forward. In my capacity, both as the President of the Guam Community College and as the Chairwoman of the Guam Education Board, I see the opportunities lost to our students to advance their education and to build a better future for themselves. In many instances, it's not for a lack of ability or interest, but simply because no one in their family knows the process to apply for college, a process that can be quite daunting for a 17-year-old student. This legislation has the potential to remove financial barriers to higher education for every single public high school senior moving forward. In fact, there is ample evidence of the success of this program in many state educational systems. As you already know, the state of Louisiana was the first to require mandatory completion of the free application for federal student aid or FAFSA in 2018. Louisiana now boasts a 78% FAFSA completion rate for its high school students. This means more access to federal assistance and more students able to attend college. Today, there are a total of 13 states that have FAFSA as a prerequisite to graduation from high schools, including Louisiana, Illinois, Alabama, Texas, and California, to name a few. It is an effective means to ensure that we do not disenfranchise any student of the opportunity to pursue their education. Beyond the numbers, the process of applying for FAFSA exposes to our students to the possibilities beyond their current circumstances. In school year 2023, it is reported about 1,739 high school seniors graduated from the Guam Public School System. Imagine that Guam has this law established last year, and we achieved the Louisiana completion rate. At 78% completion, 1,356 graduates would have applied for FAFSA and been better informed about their options after high school. That level of exposure can change the trajectory of our community in just one generation. Currently, the Guam Community College Reach for College Department provides valuable information sessions to parents and students on the importance of applying for FAFSA and the benefits in enrolling in post-secondary education. I believe the impact of this program would be exponential, as it will guide our students into the post-secondary pipeline where many can receive assistance in applying for college. However, the mandate will also increase the demand on counselors at all of the publicly funded high schools. As you deliberate this legislation, I would like to make a suggestion that the bill mirror the opt-out requirements adopted by California. So the first option for the opt-out was pupil authorization, and this is an emancipated minor or age 18 or older. That states, "by signing this form, I have read the information on the reverse, I understand what FAFSA is, and I choose not to submit the completed financial aid application." The second option was for a parent, is parent or guardian authorization, which states, "the pupil named on this form is under the age of 18. I am a parent or legal guardian of the above-named pupil, and by signing this form, I have read the information on the reverse, I understand what FAFSA is, and I choose for my pupil not to submit the completed financial aid application." And the third option is the counselor authorization, that states, "my signature below certifies that reasonable efforts to ensure pupil completed the FAFSA application has been made, but I have determined the pupil is unable to complete requirements of Section 3223, Chapter 3, Title 17, Guam Code Annotated," of course, if passed into law. Thank you once again for the opportunity to support Bill 211-37. Sutus Massey.
Thank you, Mrs. Okada. Is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony on Bill 211? Okay. Maybe, Mr. Superintendent, I did have just a couple of questions. Could you describe the, what you imagine the process would be if we make this mandatory? So what type of assistance would GDOE offer relative to filling out the application, or would it be some of the higher learning institutions that would do that? And then what happens after the application is filled out?
We already have a process, we have a process in place with our high school counselors to work through the FAFSA. So the training has already been provided in terms of the technical side of it, and that's just something that's refreshed as, as the rules change over time. We follow up with that with professional development for our counselors. So it's not a mechanism that's new that we would have to put in place. The effort would be then the follow-up and tracking of each individual student to be sure that we met the requirements of the law.
I had received just some concerns about the type of information that's contained in a FAFSA application, right? It's very, you know, personal information, income information, information about, you know, any government assistance that not just a student and their parents might receive, but anybody who's, you know, living in the house, right? So I guess my question is, how do we ensure that the sanctity of this information isn't compromised while it's in the possession of the Guam Department of Education?
We can, we can keep information confidential in the context of working with the counselor, but once the form is submitted, and actually, it's done digitally now, so once it's, once it's submitted, that's the objection that I've run into with parents, is I don't want big government knowing my financial details. And that's, and that's not just here. That's every place I've been involved since FAFSA's been around, that disclosure of confidential finances is the primary objective.
Mrs. Okada, can I, can I ask, so, because I'm just trying to wrap my head around the process, right? So let's say we have students who fill in the FAFSA, and then they're made aware that they're entitled to some type of assistance for their college education. Where do you guys come into the picture and kind of walk it from there to, let's get you a scholarship, let's get you enrolled?
So when, when an individual fills out the financial aid form, the FAFSA form, they receive a, what they call an EFC. That EFC number determines what level of support can be supported through Pell. So not all students are eligible for 100% Pell's, because not all students are full-time. So there's a range. And so based on the family contribution, that determines how much financial aid may or may not be available to the student. And so once they are, and so the good thing about it is, if you know you qualify for financial aid, then you can, you know, come in and register and go to school. And so we use that, the results of your submission of your FAFSA, we use those results to determine how much a student, based on the federal guidelines, how much a student is entitled to in terms of supporting their education at the college.
Okay, thank you. I guess the concerns I had again were that there's really nothing in the bill that, I know the information's already confidential by nature of the application, but I would just look, maybe in committee, we can add some more layers of protection relative to keeping this information confidential and not subject to FOIA or anything like that.
And we are bound by FERPA laws regarding all student records. So, and our employees have been trained based on what can and cannot be released.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mrs. Okada. Speaker Trelawney?
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. So would you envision this is done in a classroom where everybody's going to have a computer and they're going to fill out the FAFSA, and it's going to be submitted electronically? Or how would this be done, in a counselor's office, one by one?
When we do the training, because it requires parental information, you know, tax returns and such, so this is usually done one-on-one. and such, so this is usually done one-on-one. We do hold some workshops for parents and their students so that they can understand what the process is. So it's for our staff that goes out, we do work sessions and workshops for parents and students, so they can understand how to fill out the form.
All right. That's what GCC does.
That's correct.
So it's outside school hours?
Oftentimes, yes. But we do provide information to students that we are hosting workshops either on campus or at other locations, so that they can avail of the opportunity to understand FAFSA.
Okay. Mr. Superintendent, how do you foresee this taking place? You've got how many counselors in each high school, and how many students, and how do you foresee this?
We have counselors at each high school, and this is a process that we would actually start working with in a junior year, because we have students who apply for early admission. So that's the appropriate timing. Generally, it starts out as a session with a whole group, and then students can work individually with the counselors.
Do their parents come onto campus and work with the counselors to do this? Or, no, I really want to know how literally it's going to get?
I want to say all of our campuses have family workshops, but I can't say that at this point. But that's exactly the model that I would like to see, just as we do at the elementary level. We have Math Night for families, I mean, to bring families in so that they can, it is a complex process. It can be rather confusing, having done it several times myself, and it's like, I could use help with it, and most families would respond to that in a positive way, I believe.
All right. And so GDOE will have no contact with this information. Is that correct? It just goes into the computer directly to the federal government?
That's correct. We don't gather that information at all.
I mean, yeah. So how do you get proof that they've submitted? Just whatever the student has to print out, whatever they receive electronically back from FAFSA?
Speaker, so if a student wanted to come to GCC, there's a code that they input as the institution code, and so that information will go to the institution. So that's how we're able to retrieve, based on whether a stu-, you know, if a student has a...
Right. But GDOE is the one who needs the information in order to, according to the bill, they can't graduate unless GDOE has proof that they have submitted a FAFSA. So how are you going to get that? Just, they can print something out? I would think there's some kind of...
And I have not touched this software myself recently, but you're going to get a code, not the code, but you're going to get a receipt.
Yeah.
It's been done, and then it's been in, and that could be printed out and turned in.
Okay. Because I just want to make sure that the privacy issues are resolved. So pretty much, you're mandating that the students are going to get access to a computer with their parents' information and do everything they need to do to fulfill this FAFSA. It's difficult. So if you're going to do it at the schools and with counselors, I don't know, I'm just trying to imagine this, in a room, walking around with the parents' information, helping them, I don't know, I'm not sure.
That's one way to accomplish it, but you can have a workshop set up.
Okay. All right. Well, I support this in order to give them options. I'm a little worried about this mandatory, but, you know, they can't graduate without it, and then, of course, there are exceptions. How do you do the ASVAB? Is that a mandatory or voluntary? And do you do that during class time, or how is that done?
The ASVAB is voluntary.
And is it done during class time?
Yes, it is.
What if a, what if the parent is not cooperating or participating, not, the student can't do it without them? Is that correct?
If they're under the age. And so that's why there is an opt-out for a parent. So there's three opt-out options. A student who is eighteen that says, "I don't want to do it." A parent who says, "I'm not going to provide the information." And the third one is a counselor's review of reasonableness as to whether, as to why a student should be granted the option out.
Do you think students who are trying to get this over with so that they can get their diploma might enter information that's not correct and then have problems later on because it's contradictory information that they're submitting, you know, later? Or do you, that's not really an issue?
The federal financial aid has a validation process, and there is a process where further information may be required in order to, it gets flagged, certain things get flagged. And so there's additional information that may be required by our financial aid office to validate their submission.
Right. I just worry, I don't want them to be accused of falsifying information or anything like that, just because they want to get their diploma. Anyways, has the board discussed this? The Guam Department of Education Board?
No, ma'am.
No, okay. And when, in your testimony for GCC, so I understand you do these programs, you college, reach for college, and you go out to the schools, and you coach the parents and the students into doing this. That's great. But in one line, you said that, "Filling the FAFSA, they will be better informed about their options after high school." Is that necessarily true, or only if they, they have to do more? Because if they submit the FAFSA, schools don't normally respond, do they? You have to go apply to the schools. You have to go check out GCC.
So, correct. But we have a lot of students that will probably be eligible for financial aid, that by filling out the FAFSA, they'll know that they can afford to go to college. And so this is an indicator that they have an option to attend post-secondary. Of course, post-secondary education is not mandatory. It's highly encouraged for individuals, you know, to get some level of post-secondary education so that they can be successful in the workforce. And so this provides the opportunity, because you don't know what you don't know unless you turn, unless you try and you fill it out.
Yeah.
And we have students that are really, that are surprised when they have a, you know, EFC low enough to receive full financial aid.
Great. All right. Thank you. And the increased demand on counselors, how do you, how are you going to deal with that? Or do you not believe that's a problem?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
It was suggested there would be an increased demand on your counselors. How are you going to handle that? Do you believe the counselors can handle that?
The increase is going to be the number of students involved, and initially, we'd have to look at what that really looks like. I mean, you anticipate, if we're going to have all the students do it, then that's a process we'll have to work our way through. But we do that with a number of other things that involve counselors, for example, doing course selections for, scheduling for the following school year. Those kinds of things can be done in the daily schedule of the school.
All right. And then finally, so GCC, you can help students to do this process, right? UOG as well. UOG's not here. I'm just curious if the sponsor knows what they're, if they are willing to assist as well? Like, students can get this done by going to GCC and asking for help versus in the schools?
So, Speaker, we also have counselors in the high school, that vocational guidance counselors that are employed by GCC, that are at the public high schools. And the Reach for College really stemmed as a grant that we received many years ago of about one and a half million dollars, and it was called a College Access Challenge Grant. And so when the grant went away, when the funding went away, the need didn't go away. So we localized it. And so we now have a staff, I want to say of about four individuals, that is part of their duty to reach individuals so that they can provide information sessions so that they can go to college. So to the extent possible, I know we are recruiting for one additional vacancy that we currently have, but to the extent that we continue to provide those services, the college will do those services, because we have a vested interest in this by having students come to the community college and to increase our enrollment.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Speaker Trelawney. Senator Tydewy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon to those who are here today. Thank you so much for coming to testify. Mr. Superintendent, how long will it take for you to come up with the second, the third part on page three, where it says, "The Guam Education Board may adopt rules and implement the requirements of this section." How long do you think it'll take for you to put something like this together? And have you had that experience of this type of application at the prior school you oversaw? I guess the military schools.
Given where we are in the calendar, it would be, it would take us the rest, the remainder of the school year to put the policy together, but we could have it in effect for the following year.
Okay. And to, Mrs. Okada, if a student, I appreciate these Option 1, 2, and 3. I totally agree with these options to be provided, and I hope that the superintendent incorporates this into his rules and regulations, the options that are here in your testimony. But I have a question. If a student decides to waive his rights to do this, does it stop that individual after they graduate, they get their diploma, a couple of years down the line, to be able to fill out an application if they decide to go to college?
No, ma'am.
So it doesn't, right?
No, ma'am.
A person could always change their mind anytime and just fill it out, maybe two years from now after he's graduated, or three years or so?
Yes, ma'am. So there's no requirement for students to enter post-secondary education?
Yeah.
So if someone wants to take a break two or three years after high school, then when they're ready, they can fill out the FAFSA form.
And does UOG and GCC provide that upfront? If they plan on going to school, give the student all options on, you know, helping assist with tuition by certain grants such as this one?
Yes, ma'am. It's part of our new student orientation every semester.
That's good to hear. Okay. And I like the fact that you start these students off in junior year, you know, get them ready with these applications. That's very helpful to know, that the counselors are letting them know about their options. Yeah. So junior year is a good time to start, not senior, because they're too busy with their senior trips and partying on, and, you know, I don't know about you, but I remember my senior year. It's almost a blur, but I remember the fun I had. So I thank you so much again for testifying. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tydewy. At this time, I'd like to defer to Senator Shelton for her closing statement. Senator?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you to Dr. Okada, and thank you to Superintendent Swanson for your testimony today as well, and for hearing this bill, Mr. Chair. I think that the benefits here of having our students graduating from the Department of Education, knowing what options they have in front of them to apply for college or any post-secondary education, as was shared in today's hearing, is extremely beneficial to all of us and to uplift our entire island. I know there are concerns about the invasiveness of the FAFSA form, asking for your income and your assets, that families would not like to share. And again, we do have those opt-out options, but I would like to thank Dr. Okada for suggesting the language to mirror California's legislation for us to be even more specific with these options for those eighteen years and over, a counselor's permission, and then, of course, an opt-out by the parents themselves or guardians. And I believe that the information, this very private data that will be shared in this form, will not cross hands of the Department of Education. It is submitted directly into the FAFSA form, and the institution they are applying to will receive that information, not the Department of Education. According to the bill, the Department of Education will provide the support needed through the counselors, or through the counselors from the Guam Community College or the University of Guam, to help students and families input that information directly into the federal form, online. All of it is done online. And students who are applying for grants, after finding out the information, they will actually not have to fill out a separate form. A Pell grant comes automatically after it is determined you are eligible through the FAFSA form. They will have to apply for any additional loan if they are qualified for a federally subsidized loan, but all Pell grants, which many, many, many students on Guam, due to our income levels, our levels here on the island, are eligible for, and that will not take any additional application process. So those are just some points of clarification to help us move this bill forward, and I hope that we will garner more of our colleagues' support to help our students navigate these different pathways after high school. Situs Massey, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Shelton. If there's no further testimony on the bill, that will conclude the public hearing on Bill 211-37. Reminder, the committee will continue to accept testimony on the measure at battlefield function at guamlegislature.org. Now, we're now going to take a short recess before we hear testimony on the appointments of Mr. Paul Mendiola to the CAHA Board, and Mrs. Angie Tydewy as Director of CAHA. We'll be right back. Situs Massey. Buenos, the Committee on Education, Public Safety, and the Arts now reconvenes to hear and accept testimony on the appointment of Paul B. Mendiola as a member of the Governing Board of the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities for a term of four years, from January 2022 to December 2026, to fill a position vacated by the previous member whose term expired. We'll also hear testimony on the appointment of Angie R. Tydegui as Director of Kaha to serve at the pleasure of the Governing Board. I'd like to now invite those who are here to provide testimony on the appointment of Mr. Mendiola to have a seat at the table before we hear from the nominee himself. So again, everybody providing testimony on the appointment of Paul B. Mendiola as Kaha Board Member. I'd like to remind those providing testimony, please state your name for the legislative record, and we'll begin with Mr. Mark Mendiola, sir.
Buenos, and half a day, in the name of Senator Barnett, Senator Turlahy, Senator Tydegui. I stand, I'm here today. I've known this Paul Benny Cruz Mendiola for my entire life. He's my older brother. And as I was, people are coming in, they're congratulating me for being appointed. So obviously, you know, we look alike. But, you know, as I was thinking about, you know, service, I'm reminded of what was ingrained in my brother and our family. And my cousin Roland Duennius reminded me of growing up where my father would teach us how to carve things and to do things with our hands, carpentry. And so we kind of carried that on. I'm here, you know, my brother, anything that he touches or anything that he's involved in, he's super committed and dedicated. And, you know, he left Guam to go pursue his career. And he stayed off Guam for 20-some years, but he came back with his family, my sister-in-law Tara, his three boys, Evan, Nicholas, and Josh. And when he decided to come back here to Guam and to reestablish roots, you know, we've always had conversation about service to our people. And of course, I was involved in a lot of things, but every Friday, we're at his house and we're talking about things that impact our lives as tomorrow, young tomorrow men. And so when he told me that, you know, they were considering appointing him on the Kaha Board, my brother's passion since we were little was always, there's always been a fire in him. And during the pandemic, rather than sit and just try and figure things out, he was able to turn to his outlet, which is art. And he was able to draw, and he was able to put things together and share his talent and his love for art, the beauty of our island and our culture. And so I think that's one thing that was instilled in us as a family through my father, Benny Mendiola, and my mom, Martha, and my sister here. I'm just proud, you know, that he's stepping up and he wants to help. And my parents are not here anymore, so I'm getting emotional. But, you know, it's something that we love, our island, our culture. If you're in our family, you're in our family. And I know when my brother gets on this board, he's going to do his best to serve the people of Guam and to really showcase the arts, the humanities, and everything that we were taught when we were growing up. I think if there's any thing that I want the committee to know about my brother's character, he's very sincere and his integrity is above reproach. And I know that he's going to help. And if he doesn't know certain things, he's going to ask the tough questions. And I know he's going to make the right decisions based on what's in front of him. Although he's my older brother, I respect him a lot, but we can agree to disagree in certain things. But at the end of the day, I know that what's in his heart is really for, you know, for the people and the things that he's passionate about. So I hope that he garnishes your support today, and you're probably going to hear testimony from our family and friends that are here with us. And I just want to thank them for coming out and really putting their names to my brother's nomination, because we've got people from all walks of life that we've, my brothers has touched. And this is just an indication of his ability to bring people together. And I think if that's one thing we need in our government, in our leadership, is people that can bring people together for a common good and a common cause. So, un dunkul en seduzmasi for the opportunity to present testimony on my brother's behalf for his nomination. And although, just ask that you be a little patient with him today, because, you know, the 49ers didn't go and get the Super Bowl. He's faithful 49ers, but, you know, he's ready for this today. So, un dunkul en seduzmasi, and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Mendiola. Mrs. Tydegui?
Hafadee, senators. My name is Angie Tydegui. I am currently the Acting Director for the Guam Council of Arts and Humanity Agency, better known as Kaha. I had the pleasure, I am, first of all, I am in support of Mr. Paul Mendiola. I had the pleasure of meeting him a few years back when he came over to Kaha. And then also, I've seen his work, I was elaborated in. I know that he is associated with a lot of our artisans here on Guam. And when I went to, I believe Obra had a showing, I was there, and I said, gosh, this is so beautiful. Then when I saw Paul Mendiola's name, I said, I wonder who this person is. And then a few years later, I got to meet him, right? When he came to Kaha, introduced himself. So I would like to say he would make a great asset as part of the Kaha Board, because he has, in speaking with him and talking with him in the past few days, a month ago, I see that in him, he does have the compassion, and he does have that, you know, willingness to wanting to work with the artisans here on Guam. So with that, I want to say that he full-heartedly has my support as the Acting Director for Kaha. Thank you. An seduzmasi.
Thank you, Mrs. Tydegui.
Go ahead, sir, and just state your name for the record.
Hafadee, good morning, Chairman Barnett, Speaker Turlahy, and Senator Tydegui. My name is Carl Dominguez, and behind me is my beautiful wife, Catherine Limtiaku Dominguez. We are Paul's in-laws. And so Paul married our firstborn, our only daughter, Tara, 22 years ago in Southern California. And then they moved to Guam 12 years ago with their firstborn, Evan. He's the big guy back here. And they had two more sons since then. That's Nicholas over there and Joshua. And we're very proud of them and happy to have them as our grandsons. And so shortly after the pandemic started in March of 2020, Catherine and I went to visit them at their Orda home. And we walked into the house, and in their dining room, they had this painting on display. And I said, hey, where'd you get this painting? And Paul says, I painted it. What? You painted that? We had no idea. He had that talent, never talked about it before. He never said anything about it. But anyway, since then, he has had numerous paintings. He specializes in Guam scenery, flora, fauna, and sea life. And some of his numerous paintings now can be found in California, Arizona, Oregon, Florida, Virginia, and Portugal. Okay? So anyway, that's his passion, and he's gotten better as time goes by. And so we have, Catherine and I have also gone to his painting displays at the Micronesia Mall, the Toure Cafe, and also at De Shurley's in the Niwa. He's had others, but those are the ones I can remember going to. So you can see that he's not only an avid painter, but he really displays his paintings to the public. So obviously, I'm here to ask you to, on behalf of our family, to, and urge you to confirm his appointment to the Kaha Governing Board for two reasons. One, he is, he really wants to, no, no, he's eager to be a member of the Board. And two, I can personally assure you that if you confirm him, you will not be disappointed. So thank you again for the opportunity to testify. Happy Valentine's Day and blessed Ash Wednesday to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
Good morning, Senator Barnett, Senator Turlahy, Senator Tydegui. My name is Ignacio Guerrero, and I'm here on behalf of being invited from my childhood friend, Paul Mendiola. I'm so honored to actually be here. You know, we were childhood friends since the third grade. We both went to Ciel Tituno. We grew up in the beautiful village of Sinahania. And, you know, there's nothing more than remembering him back in that time. And, you know, it's just so recent that I've actually met now his wife, Tara. You know, welcome to Guam. I never knew he had sons until he invited me to one of his son's birthday, Josh's birthday, you know, party. But other than that, what I recall when we were growing up as childhood friends was Paul was a very good artist. Since Mrs. Sontes' class in the fourth grade, I remembered us, you know, the back in the day when you put the construction paper on the door. And then, you know, we didn't have, like, decorations at that time, so we already knew what to do, like, Paul, draw a Santa Claus, you know, for Christmas. And he did it. And then we had also a competition in the cafeteria, and he actually won that competition on the best drawing. So, you know, everything I remember is, like, vivid today for me. And I'm just honored that he invited me to testify on him, you know, on his behalf. And I'm here to support.
But you know, as I was thinking about, you know, service, I'm reminded of what was ingrained in my brother and our family. And my cousin Roland Duñez reminded me of growing up where my father would teach us how to carve things and to do things with our hands, carpentry. And so we kind of carried that on. I'm here, you know, my brother, anything that he touches or anything that he's involved in, he's super committed and dedicated. And, you know, he left Guam to go pursue his career. And he stayed off Guam for 20 some years, but he came back with his family, my sister-in-law Tara, his three boys, Evan, Nicholas, and Josh. And when he decided to come back here to Guam and to reestablish roots, you know, we've always had conversation about service to our people. And of course, I was involved in a lot of things, but every Friday, we're at his house and we're talking about things that impact our lives as Chamorro, young Chamorro men. And so when he told me that, you know, they were considering appointing him on the Kaha Board, my brother's passion since we were little was always, there's always been a fire in him. And during the pandemic, rather than sit and just try and figure things out, he was able to turn to his outlet, which is art. And he was able to draw and he was able to put things together and share his talent and his love for art, the beauty of our island and our culture. And so I think that's one thing that was instilled in us as a family through my father, Benny Mandiola, and my mom Martha, and my sister here. I'm just proud, you know, that he's stepping up and he wants to help. And my parents are not here anymore, so I'm getting emotional. But, you know, it's something that we love, our island, our culture. If you're in our family, you're in our family. And I know when my brother gets on this board, he's going to do his best to serve the people of Guam and to really showcase the arts, the humanities, and everything that we were taught when we were growing up. I think if there's any thing that I want the committee to know about my brother's character, he's very sincere and his integrity is above reproach. And I know that he's going to help. And if he doesn't know certain things, he's going to ask the tough questions. And I know he's going to make the right decisions based on what's in front of him. Although he's my older brother, I respect him a lot, but we can agree to disagree in certain things. But at the end of the day, I know that what's in his heart is really for, you know, for the people and the things that he's passionate about. So I hope that he garnishes your support today and you're probably going to hear testimony from our family and friends that are here with us. And I just want to thank them for coming out and really putting their names to my brother's nomination because we've got people from all walks of life that we've, my brothers has touched. And this is just an indication of his ability to bring people together. And I think if that's one thing we need in our government, in our leadership, is people that can bring people together for a common good and a common cause. So, un dunkul in Sisus Masi for the opportunity to present testimony on my brother's behalf for his nomination. And although, just ask that you be a little patient with him today because, you know, the 49ers didn't go and get the Super Bowl. He's faithful 49ers, but, you know, he's ready for this today. So, un dunkul in Sisus Masi and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Mandiola. Mrs. Tidigui?
Hafadee, senators. My name is Angie Tidigui. I am currently the Acting Director for the Guam Council of Arts and Humanities Agency, better known as Kaha. I had the pleasure, I am, first of all, I am in support of Mr. Paul Mandiola. I had the pleasure of meeting him a few years back when he came over to Kaha. And then also, I've seen his work, I was elaborated in. I know that he is associated with a lot of our artisans here on Guam. And when I went to, I believe Obra had a showing, I was there and I said, gosh, this is so beautiful. Then when I saw Paul Mandiola's name, I said, I wonder who this person is. And then a few years later, I got to meet him, right? When he came to Kaha, introduced himself. I would like to say he would make a great asset as part of the Kaha Board because he has, in speaking with him and talking with him in the past few days, a month ago, I see that in him, he does have the compassion and he does have that, you know, willingness to wanting to work with the artisans here on Guam. So with that, I want to say that he full-heartedly has my support as the Acting Director for Kaha. Thank you, Ansis Masi.
Thank you, Mrs. Tidigui. Go ahead, sir, and just state your name for the record.
Hafadee, good morning, Chairman Barnett, Speaker Terlali, and Senator Tidigui. My name is Carl Dominguez, and behind me is my beautiful wife, Catherine Limtiaku Dominguez. We are Paul's in-laws. And so Paul married our firstborn, our only daughter Tara, 22 years ago in Southern California. And then they moved to Guam 12 years ago with their firstborn, Evan, he's the big guy back here. Okay? And they had two more sons since then. That's Nicholas over there and Joshua. And we're very proud of them and happy to have them as our grandsons. And so shortly after the pandemic started in March of 2020, Catherine and I went to visit them at their Orda home. And we walked into the house and in their dining room, they had this painting on the display. And I said, hey, where'd you get this painting? And Paul says, I painted it. What? You painted that? We had no idea. He had that talent, never talked about it before, he never said anything about it. But anyway, since then, he has had numerous paintings. He specializes in Guam scenery, flora, fauna, and sea life. And some of his numerous paintings now can be found in California, Arizona, Oregon, Florida, Virginia, and Portugal. Okay? So anyway, that's his passion and he's gotten better as time goes by. And so we have, Catherine and I have also gone to his painting displays at the Micronesia Mall, the Toure Cafe, and also at De Shirley's in Anigua. He's had others, but those are the ones I can remember going to. So you can see that he's not only an avid painter, but he really displays his paintings to the public. So obviously, I'm here to ask you to, on behalf of our family, to, and urge you to confirm his appointment to the Kaha Governing Board for two reasons. One, he is, he really wants to, no, no, he's eager to be a member of the Board. And two, I can personally assure you that if you confirm him, you will not be disappointed. So thank you again for the opportunity to testify. Happy Valentine's Day and blessed Ash Wednesday to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
Good morning, Senator Barnett, Senator Terlali, Senator Tidigui. My name is Ignacio Guerrero, and I'm here on behalf of being invited from my childhood friend, Paul Mandiola. I'm so honored to actually be here. You know, we were childhood friends since the third grade. We both went to CL Titanon. We grew up in the beautiful village of Sinahania. And, you know, there's nothing more than remembering him back in that time. And, you know, it's just so recent that I've actually met now his wife Tara. You know, welcome to Guam. I never knew he had sons until he invited me to one of his son's birthday, Josh's birthday, you know, party. But other than that, what I recall when we were growing up as childhood friends was Paul was a very good artist. Since Mrs. Santos' class in the fourth grade, I remembered us, you know, the back in the day when you put the construction paper on the door. And then, you know, we didn't have like decorations at that time, so we already knew what to do, like, Paul, draw a Santa Claus, you know, for Christmas. And he did it. And then we had also a competition in the cafeteria, and he actually won that competition on the best drawing. So, you know, everything I remember is like vivid today for me. And I'm just honored that he invited me to testify on him, you know, on his behalf. And I'm here to support, confirm, you know, his, what's that job? And I want him to, you know, maintain and provide that mission for Kaha, you know, because I worked with prior people for the arts before, during our FestPAC, you know, times when we were in the FestPAC, when we had that event. But yes, I just want to thank him and I feel that he is the best candidate for that position. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chris?
Chairman Barnett, Madam Speaker, and Senator Tidigui, good afternoon, I mean, good morning. I am here, I'm Chris Sirangan, and I am here to support the nomination of Paul Mandiola. I have known Mr. Mandiola for the last 30 years. He was an active member of his class when he was attending at Guam Adventist Academy, getting involved in many, many community projects. I saw him as a potential future leader of Guam. I observed him as a member of the Board, getting involved in many, many other activities. He provided, he provided a great, great deal of dealership in the school project, specifically community outreach projects such as health education and so forth. After graduation, he attended La Cierro University, California, and graduated with flying colors. Then he moved to Loma Linda University where he completed his medical education. When he moved back to the island, he wanted to serve his people. He took his, he took his, he kept his, kept them, I mean, when he moved to the States to go to school, he went with his parents and he kept with them, kept them with them for about 10 years. When he came back, he also came with his parents and helped them, and helped them in many ways. When he came back, when he came back, he got involved in many projects, again, the health-related activities for the community of Guam, as well as in the island of Micronesia. He conducted many seminars in Palau and other islands. Mr. Mandiola is a tremendous influence on our young people, a great inspiration to his fellow artists. And I believe he will be a great asset in the Board, serving many, serving the Board. I appeal the committee to support him and approve his nomination.
Thank you, Mr. Sirangan. Mr. Troy Uggan?
Good morning, Senators. My name is Troy Uggan. I am the Executive Director for the Learn Schmore Project, a local nonprofit organization. I'm honored to be here for my brother Paul. I didn't know Ignacio was going to be here because I thought I had the most years and history on here, but I'll go ahead and give it a shot. So Paul and I actually have a history since middle school. We were one of the two students selected to paint a mural on the wall, which is of course itself is an honor. So my art experience goes back to that, to our childhood age in middle school. Since then, I didn't really pursue the arts. And then years later, a life happens. I saw Mr. Mandiola's art on Facebook and like, wow, I didn't know he was still painting. So I reached out to him, you know, was happy to see what he was doing. And we reconnected. Since then, we've stayed in touch and we've been working together since. If you guys were to consider Paul and confirm him, I promise you, you will not find a better person. His integrity, his dedication to the art, his amazing role as a father and husband and a dear friend. He's very fair and his willingness to collaborate is always in his mind. He just has an idea, let's do an art show. Okay, we did an art show. His dedication to the arts is very brave in a way in which he actually adjusted his employment so he can fit more time into his art. If you think about that, he has a very successful, you know, employment with his career and he adjusted that so he can put some time into his art. I mean, that says a lot right there. And so I'm very honored and proud to be here in support for Paul to be confirmed. Also, too, of the culture. The name of his website that we were tossing around is Penturun Chamorro. He's always wanting to inject the Chamorro language and culture into the arts, especially with like naming his arts and all that. And so I'm really excited for him and you guys will not be disappointed if you do confirm him to be on the Governing Board of Kaha. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Uggan. Senator Tidigui, did you have any questions for the panel?
Not for this panel. I'll save it for the nominee. I know, but I thank you so much, everyone who's here. I know most of you and do respect who you are. And so that says a lot about you being here to testify in favor of Paul. So thank you for taking the time out for a very special person. Thank you.
Sisus Masi, Senator Tidigui. Speaker Terlali?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to all of you who've testified. But I do have a question for Angie. You've been with Kaha for many years, not as a Board Member. So you've watched the Board Members, and I want to ask you, what do you think is the biggest challenge with these Board Members? Because there are some artists on the Board, right? There are business people on the Board, but, you know, this is a position that has to be fair to all the artists, take into account all of their perspectives, listen. I think it's one of the biggest jobs that's going to have to happen with this Board because that's how we keep ourselves out of conflict in our artist community and in our community in general. So how do you, what do you think is the biggest challenge for a Board Member?
Well, sitting in Kaha when I first started, I feel that the challenges is just everybody, you know, not only, but each and every one of us has our own different passions and our own ways of wanting to express what we want for, you know, what would be good for our artists, what would be good for the people of Guam, you know? Those are all different thoughts, you know? So everybody there, the Board Members, they all express. But let me tell you, Senators, yes, we do have disagreement, yes, we do have, you know, everybody, but at the end, when they all come back to the table, when they sit there, they, it's all for the good. That's all I hear from all the Board Members is, we are here for our artists, we are here, you know, for all of our artists here, we have to make this work, we have to come together. And they do. I see that. They resolve everything before they end the Board Meeting. And, you know, so they give the best and the fairest way. They're all equal, they, you know, they're out there, they're saying, and they are a governing board. So the staff, you know, I watch them very heartily. One of the biggest things that I do for them is that, with the Board Members, is that collaboration. And that's what I like. There's so much collaboration with the Board Members, with the staff, and with each other. So, you know, Mr. Mandiola will have that with us, you know, with the staff, that collaboration. But that's one of the challenges is there's always, we hear everybody, the Board hears each other out. They don't censor anybody or says, you say what you're going to say, you put your opinion out there on the table, and that's what we want to hear, the truth. How do you feel? What does it say, right? So then, that, but at the end, they always say the same thing, we're here for the artists. We have to come together, we have to agree. We may agree and disagree, but we have to think of who the artisans are and what their needs are. Senator, Speaker?
Sisus Masi. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have no questions for this panel. I thank you for your testimony. And if there's any others providing testimony on the nomination of Mr. Paul Mandiola to the Kaha Board, please come up and have a seat at the table. Sisus Masi, panel. Again, for testimony on the nomination of Mr. Paul Mandiola, please come up to the table. If there's no further testimony, we could hear from the nominee, sir? Please proceed with your testimony.
Good morning. Good morning and hafadee, Mr. Chairman, Chris Barnett, Senator Terlali, and Senator Tidigui. And also to my family, the colleagues, and friends in attendance. My name is Paul Benny Cruz Mandiola. I'm a native-born Chamorro. Thank you for being here with me before this legislative body. I am married to the most beautiful woman in the world, Tara Dominguez. We share three sons, Evan, Nicholas, and Joshua. I am truly grateful to have been appointed by the current administration to serve in the Governing Board of the Council of the Arts and Humanities Agency, easier known as Kaha. I would especially like to thank the Governor, Lillian Gurre, and Lieutenant Joshua Tenora for their trust and confidence in me to help meet the mission of the agency, which is to encourage and promote the artistic practices of our artisans and create opportunities for Guam residents to learn, experience, express, and appreciate art and artistic talent in all its forms. Please allow me to say a few things about myself as an artist specializing in the visual arts. I was born in 1974 and resided in the village of Sinahania. I attended public school, CL Titanon Elementary School, and Agatha Johnston Middle School up until the eighth grade. For high school, I attended and graduated from Guam Adventist Academy in 1992. My career as an artist began in my early childhood. I was discovered by my maternal grandfather, Juan Cruz, who saw my sketches and ability to draw at a very young age of four. He was a constant encouragement to me, and this is what kept me pursuing my art form. Soon, I was entering poster and drawing contests in school and eventually island-wide competitions. I recall competing and winning some of these events. And as a young artist, being recognized was an invaluable experience. It gave me confidence and made me proud of my God-given talents. My experiences as an artist in public school were very rich as there were programs and activities that fostered my growth. I especially appreciate being in the gifted and talented program. I would like to take the time now to recognize my teachers and mentors who encouraged me and helped me in my development. These are Mrs. Merricott, Mrs. Doris Affligui, Mrs. Betty Marquez, Mrs. Carmen Santos, Mrs. Jackson, Mrs. Rosita Duñez, Mrs. Therese Terlali, Mrs. Tina Flores, Mr. Wayne Brown, and Mrs. Gunderson. These folks were involved in way or another in my development and kept me engaged. Thank you for allowing me to recognize these individuals as some of them have passed on. I attended and graduated from Guam Adventist Academy, a private school in Windward Hills in 1992. I was very disappointed that there were no art classes available for students to enroll in. I remember feeling sad because I had the impression that art wasn't important. I remember feeling empty and lost. I tried to stay engaged, but my academic life took over the majority of my time. When I enrolled at La Cierro University in Southern California, I was surrounded with so much art. My world was once again artistically rich as there were museums and galleries everywhere. The university offered courses in art history, pottery, sculpture, painting, music, drama, et cetera. It was art in heaven. Approximately three years ago, my passion for the arts was reignited when the COVID pandemic forced me to be furloughed from my career as a dental hygienist of 20 years. I found myself easily drawn to our island's natural beauty. I began to create art that depicted Micronesian scenery and marine life. My renewed passion to create art has brought so much peace and purpose to my life. This is what drives me to this day. It is to reconnect everyone to our island and this part of the world, a place that is so rich in history and beauty. I understand the great responsibility Kaha Board Members have in assisting staff in carrying out its mission. I had the opportunity to attend the last Board Meeting as a member of the public. I was thoroughly impressed with how meeting, how the meeting was conducted and the topics that were discussed. For example, the mastership program recognizing local artists and the selection process, FestPAC delegation sponsorships and budgetary issues, announcements for shows, galleries, openings and events. I feel that I could contribute to the agency by being an advocate for young and established artists from every genre. I know firsthand the value of programs that foster growth. Our young people and artisans need us. Thank you for your time and consideration in allowing me to serve our island community in an area that is so important to me. Sisus Masi para tempo mido.
Hafalekui, Mr. Mandiola. I'd like to defer now to Senator Tidigui. Any questions for the nominee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Paul.
Good afternoon.
I think I'm one of your biggest fans, especially your turtles, you know, when you paint them. I tried to buy one of them, but I think you sold it already. But I'm not going to hold that against you.
Okay. We can work on something.
I hope so, yeah, because I love art, you know? I have a sister who's an artist as well, but, and I keep trying to push Mark Miro over there to get me one of his pieces and so. That's just a hint, Mark, right now, I'm just, yeah. But you have a great many people here to testify in your favor, and you have a good backing, the most important one, though, sitting on this board, that you have the supporters of your family, you know, to allow you to do this, to take time away from them so that you can serve in this capacity for our community and bringing your love of art, you know, to those who need encouragement to do so. So I greatly appreciate you wanting to step up to the plate, most especially. So you have everything intact. The only thing I'm concerned about, too, is that when you go forward in this, I think the Speaker brought it up, is to try and be fair, the grants that are going to be issued out to certain artists, that you really look at them, you recuse yourself, and if you see there's a conflict of interest, will you be able to do that, recuse yourself if you see a conflict of interest?
Yes, I have addressed it with, with like this organization that I'm proud of. I'm really proud to be a part of that group, Obra, President's here, and we have discussed it. And I did tell her that when it comes to issues with grant funding, especially with special interests groups and stuff, especially one a part of, I do have to recuse myself. And so we have addressed it. I totally recognize being impartial and especially being honest and being, you know, the integrity to, in serving in my capacity.
Is this the first time you've been on a government of Guam Board?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so you know that, well, your brother Mark can probably fill you in on the politics behind government of Guam Boards.
He's my biggest advisor.
Yeah. One of them isn't too sure that you read all the guidelines that govern the Board of Directors for any commissions, especially, we had, for instance, even the commission on PUC, they were taking trips and paying for it, you know, paying out of their funds, buying first-class tickets. And that's a no-no. So certain things like that, I think you should, you know, really accolade yourself with these rules and regulations, what you can and cannot do as a Board Member. One of the biggest problems that Kaha has is funding, you know, finding a sustainable, you know, funding source, number one, which is there, and they, we keep competing, you know, I say we because I'm the biggest fan of Kaha, is that we keep competing, you know, for everyone trying to take money out of the, you know, take a certain percentage out and give it to somewhere else. And there is a funding source for Kaha, but let's make sure that, you know, you fight to keep people out of the cookie jar, their hands in that cookie jar, and do well with that because there's a lot of things that need to be funded. I truly believe in the, in raising funds by, you know, well, a lot of times when people come before us, they're asking for money to cover certain things like conferences or, you know, trips or anything like that. But I think that we should teach our people to fundraise first, and whatever you can't get, then you subsidize. But the push of having people fundraise is also very important because there's not a whole lot of money that the government of Guam has to issue out, or everybody will be here for us to fund everything under the sky. And there's a lot of issues in the government of Guam that needs help, you know, but, so encourage that, look for the funding. But so encourage that, look for the funding. If you really want to know something, well, follow the money. And that will tell a whole lot. That'll tell you a whole different story, too. So I wish you the very best. I hope you're not a yes-man, where you say yes to anybody because they want to put you in this position and all of a sudden you have to conform to saying whatever they want. I hope you have your own individual mind. Usually, most artists do. The ones I know, the good ones like yourself, they all have their own mind, and they make their own decisions. So please don't be coerced into making decisions that you think are not right, unethical, or may, you know, just because she is who she is. I hope you do the right thing. And I want you to know that my office is just one floor up from CAHA, and that door is always open. If you need any assistance at all or you have a concern, it's always open for you, Paul, so please feel free to use that, okay?
Thank you very much.
And good luck to you. And thank you to your family here and everybody who's here to support you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Taidegui. Speaker Taraji?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Mendiola, for being willing to serve in this capacity and for your passion and stated advocacy that you intend to use in this position. Maybe I see it a little differently. I feel like the hardest part is not really the integrity of those who are in this position. I feel like they have all acted in what they believe is best. It's just, it's just these are artists, and they have a different perspective, right? That's what their fame is for, is their perspective, and it's different. At least, that's my experience as I've seen different perspectives. And that's really what the board has to manage, right? It's like, so you're not going to make them all happy. You're not going to maybe be happy yourself as an artist, right? With, but yeah, we've got limited policies in the government. We might need more. We hoping for your advocacy in that regard, right, as a board? Or that, like we discussed at the last oversight hearing or informational briefing on CAHA regarding, like, the folk arts and the master's program and proposed changes to that. Yeah, I just feel like, I think because the folk arts are under CAHA right now, that it's them who I'm very sensitive to, right? These are, for the large part, these are elderly people. They deserve our respect. I want to listen to them, but even they don't always agree. And so I just, I don't know. I guess I don't know you that well, although I'm very proud of your artwork. We've met, and you've shown me that, and I've seen it even on Guam. Your father-in-law mentioned the places around the world where it is, but we're very proud of your art. Do you think you'd have a problem or have you ever had that experience with these artists or of these elderly artists, let's say, and that you don't agree with them, and how would you handle that?
Not at all. As a matter of fact, I'm a big advocate for them. I've met several of them. Some of them are my patients. And I sympathize with them because, as an artist, I like to express myself through my work. And when people express how the art makes them happy, I mean, that's a big, significant thing on somebody's psyche, you know? And I find art to be very therapeutic. Our elderly are, you know, going away relatively fast. At the last board meeting that I was at, there was discussion about how we have to speed the process up because these guys are dying. They're passing on before us. And I really think that we should be very sensitive to them, and we should celebrate their art forms. I'm in totally support of that. And I hope one of the things that I can do is help speed that process up. And I do know that there's certain criteria for the mastership program, something that, you know, there has to be a standard. There has to be some review board. And that all has to be done because anybody can claim to be an artist. And so CAHA, I think, should be responsible for that. And we need to do something quick because I do know some that are in their 70s and 80s, and life expectancy in Guam is much less than the American public. But yes, I am in support of that.
Thank you. What are your goals for the public and CAHA?
You know, my goal is, like I said in my testimony, was to be an advocate for young artists. I knew how important it was to be in programs. There were programs that were there, but I think it could be better. And I think funding, as she mentioned, is important. I think maybe some of that stuff should be earmarked towards really promoting the arts and fostering growth for elementary school kids. Recently, there was CL Titanal, of all places. The school that I went to showcased artworks from the kids, the students that were there. I thought that was the most amazing thing that could come out of, you know, a public school. I wish that was around when I was a student. But it's things like that that are really significant for me.
So you think CAHA could do more in that regard?
Yes, of course.
All right. And are you working full-time now?
No, I'm not.
All right, just curious because I think this board is totally voluntary. And I guess I just was going to ask if you have time to commit to working on the board.
We meet once a month.
Yeah, they have these projects, though, that they're trying to accomplish in between the board meetings. And so would you be willing to participate in those?
Yes, of course. I would be able to dedicate some time.
All right. I don't, I don't, I don't know. I think the whole goal of the government getting involved in the arts and CAHA and having any kind of involvement is we don't want our artists to have to be the fundraisers, right? We want them to be the artists. We want to be proud of what they've done and their work. That is their work. And so we have to come up with other ways to, yeah, manage the funds that we have so we can support them. But thank you again for being willing to serve in this capacity, and I very much appreciate your straightforward answers. And I hope you don't mind my questioning you. I just want to put those all on the record. So si zuz maasi.
Thank you, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you. I'd like to also recognize the CAHA board chair, Ms. Monica Guzman, who's in attendance, as well as the board secretary, Ms. Donna Klopenberg, and any other board members present. Si zuz maasi for your attendance. Mr. Mendiola, who are some of your favorite local artists?
Oh, so much to mention. There's a... Do you really want me to say all the names?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, don't get in trouble and leave someone out on the other.
Yeah, I know.
I know we got Valentine's Day plans, so.
Art in many ways, man, I tell you, there's just so much to mention. Acrylics, I gotta say, I really like Ron Castro. Amazing, amazing work, trained, and, man, just some really good stuff that he puts out there, you know? Watercolor, I gotta say, I love Maria Fitzpatrick. She's a former judge, I believe, retired judge. Oh, you ought to see some of her work. And I'm really proud to be a member with her in OBRa. And there's just so many artisans in our group that, you know, we can all feed off of. I really enjoy the commodity that we have. We have workshops that kind of help expand your, you know, your horizons with regards to different medias and stuff. I just, I'm just going to leave it at that, but...
Right on. Didn't mean to put you in a tough spot there.
Gotcha.
But you mentioned the organization that you're a member of, OBRa, which is, according to your packet, the Organized Brotherhood relating to the arts. Can you tell us a little bit about this group?
Oh, this group, yep. It's, I know they were, it formed in the early '90s, I believe. Is that correct? Oh, 2011. Oh, but it was, it was something else before. But it's transparent into what is known as OBRa today. And we have grown from like maybe 12 members to almost over 20 now, right? 31, to be exact. And the thing I like about this group is they're very well organized. They fundraise. Like I mentioned, the workshops that they do, some of these guys are very well-versed with their art, and they love to share. We had some guy just recently talked about how he can help us stretch our own canvases. I mean, it's so wide and beyond, you know, everything from creating art to, you know, the different medias to all the resources that we have. And I think it's a great way for people to really just engage in the arts, learning from each other, and then supporting each other. And that's, to me, one of the greatest things, especially when it comes to being a part of an organization. And I'm really a proud member of that group. We meet once a month. After we meet, we have a paint session. And these are all great ways to stay engaged, you know? We welcome pretty much everybody from all walks of life.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mendiola. I guess I would just, to kind of expand on Senator Taidegui's concerns, what do you plan to do if there's ever a conflict with your membership in OBRa and your potential membership on the CAHA board? Or do you see any instance where that might occur?
Of course. Like I said, if ever there's like a grant application that has to be approved by the board, I will, of course, you know, recuse myself. I'll let them know that I am a part of this group and, you know, go from there. And I trust my colleagues. These guys are very honest. I love, you know, how organized they were. And it was so nice because everybody spoke their mind. At least, that's how I felt. They were very honest about how they felt about certain things. And it did get a little, you know, heated, but hey, that's what we're there for. We're there to iron things out and be able to, you know, come up with a decision and then go from there. And I'm just really glad to be a part of a board team like that.
In your testimony, you talked about traveling around in the States and visiting museums and galleries. How do you think we can get, I mean, obviously, we have many limitations that are going to prevent us from having galleries. I mean, we have a gallery. But how do you intend to get us from where we're at now to maybe someplace or a scenario where our art is out there in the public? Again, you're increasingly advocacy for the young people. As a member of the board, how do you plan to implement those kind of outreaches?
I have thought about those things, actually. And I think we just have to collaborate more with, like, the Guam Museum, maybe, you know? Have a dedicated space to, you know, the, to the, you know, local artists, especially with CAHA, especially if we sponsor events. There's, you know, and it's not just the display of artwork. There's, you know, dance, there's, you know, the chanting and things like that. But all, we need to have a place that, you know, of course, people can feel comfortable and that we can refer to as a place for art. There's quite a few places I, you know, I was just imagining. Maybe down in Tumon, I don't know. There's just so many different places, especially for tourists. Tourists love, you know, buying artwork from local artists, especially the Japanese. I mean, we were just, OBRa had a nice exhibit up at the Micronesia Mall. It was just for maybe two weeks, two and a half weeks. And, man, that foot traffic was unbelievable. We had people who were wanting to buy things on the spot, you know? And we need to make that available to interested parties.
Thank you for that, sir. I think everyone in the committee and everyone in this room understands the importance of the arts. But, you know, traditionally, the arts are underfunded and underappreciated in many ways. So if you could just go to bat for the arts, why support the arts?
I know how important art was for me growing up, even as an adult. I find that when people create art or, you know, the process of doing so, it is really, really, really therapeutic. For me, when I put my kids to bed at 9:30, 10 o'clock, I'm in my studio from like 10:30 till about maybe 1 or 2 o'clock in the morning, and that's my time. Nice music, dim the lights, you know? And to me, ah, man, there's just nothing more valuable than that, especially in this day and age with all the stresses that we have. And I invite people to try it out, you know? And I think also there's a lot of artists that are undiscovered, and you never know what may come up. And if we can just advocate for them trying or, you know, using art as for therapy, that's great. And I know it firsthand.
Can you expand just a little bit more on your advocacy for young artists and how you plan to do that as a board member for CAHA?
You know, putting resources to have art competitions? And the reason why I say competitions, not so much for the spirit of competition, but, you know, when students are awarded certain things, that's something that they can carry with them. I wish I kept all my awards, you know what I mean? And to be able to be recognized for, you know, your dedication to your craft or whatever it is, to be able to, you know, refer back to, oh, I did this, this, it's invaluable to a young artist, and especially at a young age. So creating art competitions or activities is a great way to, you know, just keep people engaged, especially the young ones.
Did you get a chance to attend the exhibit at CL Titanal?
Yes, I did. It was for, they were only open for a brief time. I had some engagements that day, but I did see. And I think they also moved up to GPO. They have a little room there, but because of the amount of artworks, they had to downsize it. But it, I don't know if it's still displayed there, but it was.
It's still not there?
It's still there, from what I heard, yeah.
Everybody go to GPO and check out. Were you impressed with the artwork that you saw?
Oh, so much potential. And not only that, it's just awesome to see the kids be able to produce such a thing, you know? And then I believe one of the, I think the teacher is part of our group, too, right? That's awesome. You see, it's networking like that that is so significant.
So how do we reach those students who are showing an early, you know, capacity proficiency in the arts? And how do we bring them along to, you know, reach a position like where you're at? As, you know, the Guam Department indication, they got to teach the math, they got to teach the science, they got all these requirements. So I think a lot of times, we're not able to give that focus to students who may excel in the arts, whether it's painting, chanting, dancing, or whatever. So what ideas do you have to bring more of those opportunities to art-oriented, arts-oriented students?
I really think we should take advantage of social media. I wish I had it when I was around, when I was a young kid, to be able to, you know, just keep your portfolio together, especially digitally. That is an amazing thing, technology, because, you know, I wish I was able to pull up some of the stuff that I've done before and then just see my progression, you know? And, you know, to maybe create a database for our children and then be able to just keep it in a nice database that they can have access to or just other interested parties. I mean, that's a great way to just keep them engaged.
Thank you, sir. I know that most people would think that they wouldn't encounter much controversy by serving on the CAHA board. However, if you read this morning's news and you're following current events, there is a story featured in the Pacific Daily News. And I'll just go over the headline. Attorney General Reviews Whether CAHA Can Remove Healer From 100-Member Festback Delegation to Hawaii Over Community Concerns. And I'll just say this committee is aware of quite a number of community concerns. And this is a decision maybe someone who's nominated to the CAHA board thinks they might never have to deal with or make. So I guess my question is two parts. First of all, in your willingness and your capacity to serve, are you prepared to deal with scenarios that are controversial like this one?
Yes, I did read that, and I would like to defer any comments about it right at this point. I do know that if we are to tackle such an issue, we'll do it as a governing board.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mendiola. And I have nothing further. I appreciate, appreciate your testimony here. I gotta say, I'm a fan of your artwork as well, and I wish you all the luck. And thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right. That'll conclude our testimony for the nomination of Mr. Paul B. Mendiola to the CAHA board. We'll now move on to testimony for Angie Taidegui as director of CAHA. So everybody who's here to provide testimony for Mrs. Taidegui, please come up to the table. Anybody else here to provide testimony for Mrs. Taidegui? Please come up. Okay, and I guess we'll go ahead and start with the Chair of the Board, Ms. Monica Okada. Good morning, ma'am.
Buenos, good morning. Senator Barnett, Senator Titegui, thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning to testify in support of Ms. Angie Titegui to be the Director of the Guam Council of Arts and Humanities. Happy Valentine's Day, happy blessings today. I just want to say that since Angie's appointment, detailed appointment as Director in May of 2023, she has worked diligently with intention in bringing the agency and programs up to standards and also identifying potential grant opportunities. The board is in full support of her appointment as indicated in the letter of January 25th, where we accepted her nomination from Governor Luli Young-Guerrero. Angie, through her years at Kaha, has exhibited commitment and dedication to the arts and the agency. And it's evident in the number of artists and cultural practitioners that are here today. Not only is Angie very astute, but her administrative skills and her people's skills are a great benefit to the agency as she is going to be very involved in collaboration among all of, among the community with local, federal, and private sector partners. Like I said earlier, her relationship with artists and cultural practitioners and the community is very deep. And upon first meeting with Angie, you can tell, you can just get that sense of sincerity when she's talking to you and the sense of dedication and how sincere she is about providing support to the agency and to our artists and cultural practitioners. She's also very knowledgeable in dealing and knowing that as the Guam Council of Arts and Humanities, the agency serves all the people of Guam, all the communities of Guam, all of our artists and all of our cultural practitioners. There is no, I mean, she has to reach out to the entire community, and Angie has been very successful in doing that. The work, the leadership that she has demonstrated at the agency with just a staff of four is incredible. The work that comes out of Kaha with all of the initiatives and the mandates is just amazing. For years and years, I've always believed that the staff at Kaha has got to be the largest, the hardest-working agency on the island, along with the, all of our 19 mayors and vice mayors. So I put those two agencies as the hardest-working group of government employees. And I, as, as you, I urge you to positively confirm Angie as the Director. And while I'm at it, I'd like to also advocate for an urge for an upwards in funding for staffing levels at the Guam Council of Arts and Humanities. Thank you very much, and thank you. Sisus Maasi. Oh, I am Monica Guzman, Taotao Mangela. I'm Chair of the Guam Council of Arts and Humanities.
Thank you, Monica. Mayor Chargalov?
Good morning.
Morning, Senator Chris Barnett, Chairperson, Committee on Education, Public Health, and the Arts, Senator Telo Titegui. Hafaday, good morning. My name is Anthony Chargalov, Mayor of Inalahan. And I'm here to provide testimony in support of Angie Titegui as the Director of Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency. Angie is a longtime resident of Inalahan and has volunteered in our community in many different ways. She has volunteered as a basketball coach for youth for many years in our church parishes, GAFPAO, and many other charitable organizations within our community. The one thing that stands out about Angie in my mind is that once she commits, she gives her 110% each and every time. She does not make failure an option. I know that she would do great things for Kaha. She is creative and strategizes on how to get the job done. She has the can-do, will-do attitude. She is definitely immersed in our culture, and her actions are reflective of Kaha's mission, which is to provide the artistic practice of our artisans and create opportunities for Guam residents to learn, experience, express, and appreciate art and artistic talent in all forms. Angie would be a great asset to lead Kaha. And I ask all the honorable senators of the 37th Guam Legislature for your kind consideration and confirm her appointment to be the next Director of Kaha. Thank you, Sisus Maasi.
Chargalov, Queen, Mayor Chargalov, Mayor Perez?
Honorable Senators Chris Barnett and Senator Telo Titegui, my name is Jesse Perez, former mayor of Inalahan. As former mayor of Inalahan, I am current, I am extremely pleased to be able to recommend and support Ms. Angie Rose Q. Titegui for the Director of the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency known as Kaha. I have known Angie during my time in office and had the opportunity to see her on many occasions, performing with exceptional skill rooted into our culture and traditions. Inalahan Village, being registered with the National Historic District in America, Angie has demonstrated her leadership by empowering youth programs to our young people, especially those in need of guidance to build their self-esteem. She did an outstanding job when the program was completed. Inalahan is a living museum of her Tomorrow Life of the early 1900s. Her experience working with our manomcos, annual fiesta programs, and keeping our customs and traditions alive, Angie proved to be capable of being Director, most especially her role in the aftermath of Super Typhoon Maua. She takes pride in preserving the cultural traditions of her island. I commend and support her nomination for the Director of Kaha. I am sure she will benefit from your vote of confidence and represent our island in the upcoming Festback well through her work. Say no Maasi.
Sisus Maasi, Mayor. Mrs. Bobas?
Hafaday, Chair Barnett, Senator Titegui. I am Jackie Bobas, Program Coordinator for the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency. As the lead coordinator at Kaha, I'm delighted to offer my testimony in support of Mrs. Angie Rose Q. Titegui as the Executive Director of Kaha. I'm sure that Mrs. Titegui, along with the others testifying on her behalf, will speak to her expertise and qualifications to be a Director. Through my testimony, I aim to provide you more insight about Angie as an individual and her strong work ethics. Mrs. Titegui joined Kaha in 2016, just two months before Guam hosted the 12th Festival of Pacific Arts known as Festback. As a Program Coordinator Three, she fully immersed herself in her role. Festback, considered the Olympic of the arts, was a perfect initiation project for her. As Kaha's primary responsibility is Guam's programming presentation at the festival. With Guam being the host, we had a 500-member delegation, the largest delegation in the history of Guam's participation. What would have been a daunting task to many, Angie took the challenge head-on, grabbing the bull by the horns and giving more than what was expected to her. I can attest that she and I spent weeks prior to the festival and weeks after the festival, and we wouldn't leave the office until midnight, probably, every night. We did a lot of troubleshooting, and she was very instrumental. One thing about Angie, she's very, very hands-on. From her first day at Kaha, Angie hit the ground running, and she continues to do so to this day. Next month, March 2024, will mark her eighth anniversary with Kaha. And I firmly believe that she possesses all the qualities necessary to lead the agency. I had the privilege of being her supervisor until she was appointed as the Kaha Acting Director last May. I can attest to her perfectionism, methodical approach, meticulousness, adaptability to any situation, and her ability to find effective solutions to problems and issue. Regardless of the task or project at hand, she always gives it her utmost effort. She has come full circle, starting from handling programmings and administering grants, and now holding the position she currently occupies. Angie maintains an open-door policy. She's committed, fully committed to assisting artists, creatives, and promoting, perpetuating, and advancing the arts and culture in Guam. She has demonstrated a personal, professional dedication to the arts with an unwavering desire to enhance the quality of life for the people of Guam. I firmly believe that she possesses the knowledge, expertise, and vision to propel the council and its initiatives forward. Under her leadership, I am confident that the arts and culture will flourish. I wholeheartedly endorse Mrs. Titegui's appointment as the Kaha Executive Director. Sisus Maasi for allowing me time to provide testimony on her behalf. Thank you.
Sisus Maasi, ma'am. Mr. Duennas?
Hafaday, Senator Barnett, Senator Telo Titegui. My name is Mark Duennas, Program Coordinator at Guam Kaha. Being employed at Kaha for 17 years, now having Angie, you know, working with her and seeing her knowledge and expertise as a coworker, I believe that we can, sure to you, that we can help Angie, help her guide her leadership into this organization. As you know, Kaha's been around for 55 years. And with the current board that's in place and also with the Paul Mendiola, with the newest board member, I can ensure to you that guiding our team and our Director, Angie Titegui, we can ensure you that we can carry out the rules and regulations, policies, the laws as was in place for Kaha and establishing a good relationship with our artisans here in Guam and hoping that to move Kaha forward to ensure that our laws and policies are in place and guided and hoping that our artisans and our board members have the full knowledge in moving this agency forward. With the help with our team in place, I'm sure to you that we can help support Angie as our new leader so she can carry out the necessary policies, laws, rules, and regulations in place to move this agency forward. I have, you have my full support, Angie Titegui. Congratulations on your confirmed confirmation today. I just want to say that good luck to you and hope with the knowledge that you have in place, you can apply that to the organization. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Duennas. Ma'am?
Hafaday, Senator Barnett, Senator Titegui. My name is Tanya Titanau. I am here to speak on behalf of the Eiffel Shop, which consists of Mr. Robert Titanau Jr., who's my husband, and my late father-in-law, the late master carver. I just wanted to be here to speak and to be here to support Angie as the Director of Kaha. In the many years that I have known Angie, I've, I believe that she is a great leader and candidate as the Director. She has provided support to all of the local artisans of Guam for many years. She has dedication and passion for promoting local artisans and preserving the cultural heritage of Guam, and it makes her an ideal choice for this position. Her commitment in supporting the artist, artistic community, and fostering creative and has been evident through the years with her experience and genuine care for the local artisans, she is sure to bring fresh ideas and innovative for further enriching the cultural traditions of Guam. I wholeheartedly support her and have full confidence in her ability to excel in this role. And everyone here that has explained, has said anything about Angie, they're all right. That's exactly how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Mayor?
Good morning, Senators. My, my point of view as an artist, I knew, that's how I knew Angie from Kaha. When I walk into the Kaha galleries, there's always that good greetings with this, her team. They welcome you in, they kind of brush you into doing other things that you can showcase and brings the artists out in a point of view, drive more. So I'm for Mrs. Titegui to continue our work. There's nothing wrong with what she's doing. Don't reinvent the wheel when it's working, because that's my point of view. Thank you, Senators.
So keep the wheel rolling.
Right.
Right on, okay. Senator Titegui, did you have any questions for the panel?
No, I thank everyone who's been here today and provide your input. It's very helpful. Mayor, it's good to see you, former mayor, and everyone that's here from Kaha. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Titegui. Thank you so much for your testimony. Very appreciated. Is there anyone else providing testimony on Mrs. Titegui? If so, please come up to the table and and after we conclude the hearing of testimony, we'll hear from the nominee. Mr. Duennas?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Senator Titegui. I am here in support of my niece Angie Titegui from Inalahan, the beautiful village of Inalahan. And that mayor back here will witness that because he's the one that stand up and make that village a beautiful village. Everybody knows, everybody's talking about that village. But I'm going to talk about my niece Angie Titegui. And hopefully, you, all of you, Senator, will confirm her for Director in Kaha because she will never let us down. She's going to make all of us proud as soon as you confirm her. Put her in there, and I believe you of what my testimony right now? If she let us down, I'll go get the bill and spank her. I'll spank her. And I said, please don't invite me up here to legislature to favor you. I'm going to favor you to put 100% and let everybody be proud here in Guam. Sisus Maasi, Senator Malafunshion, you're still the one, Senator Titegui. And I'm always proud. I'm going to go back down to Inalahan and drive into that beautiful village because when you go down, Angie from the village of Inalahan and especially the mayor of Inalahan is standing up, showing other villages that were all still the one. Sisus Maasi.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Duennas. Also, you guys, if you're not busy this weekend, go down to Inalahan for the Guput or Fiesta Ngaro? Fiesta Ngaro, it's Friday and Saturday, okay? All right, Mr. Sublan?
Buenos, Manas Sisus. I'm Angel Sublan, the Acting Director of Department of Parks and Recreation. I'm here in full support of the appointment of Angie Titegui to be the Director of Kaha. You know, the saying is, behind a successful man is a very supportive wife, understanding wife, and productive wife. Well, in this case, behind this successful woman is a very supportive husband, hard-working husband. And I know that because he happens to work with me, and he's the Acting Parks Administrator, John Titegui. When you have leaders in your community come forward, in Mayor Chargalov and in Mayor Perez, and members of your own community come all the way from Inalahan to testify in your behalf, then you must be worth it. And I certainly believe that Angie and also Paul would do a great job in promoting the mission of Kaha. As the Head of the Department of Parks and Recreation, I wanted to do something self-serving, and that's, I see 34 huts behind Tomorrow Village that in fact were built for Festback. And it only comes to life on Wednesdays. And I keep thinking, what can we do? Because it belongs to Department of Tomorrow Affairs, although it's a Department of Parks and Recreation property, what can we do to enhance? and Recreation property, what can we do to enhance the arts? What can we do to enhance recreation? And you know, I keep thinking, we can have weaving classes in those huts, we can, Paul can bring his art and show the kids what it is to start drawing and being artistic, instead of letting those thirty-four huts just sit there. So I’m going to ask Angie, and I’m going to ask Paul and the board, and Monica as Chairwoman, to maybe collaborate with the Department of Parks and Recreation, and see what we can do to provide opportunities for not just our artisans, but even our athletes as well, to see whether we can bring something for them and to them to make facilities that we have become useful. And so I don’t have any doubt that Angie and Paul and the rest of the board will come forward and find an opportunity. And for, for Paul, although I didn’t come up here to testify, he has a brother named Mark that looks like him, or Paul that looks like Mark, but I didn’t have a chance to work with Mark while he was on the Board of Education, but I’ve heard about him and the work he did. And if he can do that work at the Guam Education Board, I’m sure Paul Mendiola will just work us hard in the Kaha Board to bring about good things for our island. So Angie and Paul, you have my support. Sisus Maasi.
Thank you, Director Sublan. Senator Taitegui? Okay. Sisus Maasi to all those who provided testimony. Mr. Taitegui, if you can approach the table. Did you have a prepared testimony? Sure. Yes, yes. Thank you. Please proceed, ma’am.
Buenos Manas Sisus, but I think it’s almost like close to lunch, right? So Senator Barnett and Senator Telo. I had my speech, but I need to, I’ll email it. First of all, for all those that are watching and for all those that are here, who is Angie Rose Query Taitegui? I am from the village of Inalahan. I am the daughter of the late Resita Crustostamo and Kenny Lee Query, and the rear daughter of the late Mary Jeanette Crustostamo and Mr. David LG Taitegui, who now resides in Arizona. I am married, going on twenty-five years this year, to the most wonderful man of my life, John Lynn Taitegui. He is the backbone, he is my supporter, and he’s always in support of Kaha, no matter where we have a Kaha, he’s there. Thank you, honey. We have six wonderful children and five in-laws. I have Amanda and Brian, Jolene and Quentin, Nicole and Anthony Jr., Adrian, John, and Calissa, I have Jathan, Nathan, and Michaela. Those are my wonderful blessed children. And the wonder, the most beautiful, wonderful seven grandchildren, Brienne, Bryce, Caleb, Canan, Carter, Kenzie, and Camia. This is my life, these are my life, these are my, these, my husband and my children brought me up where I am today. I am, and this is the one that I am so passionate about, I am the granddaughter of the late Maria Crustostamo, Maria Meno Crustostamo, who is a content master, Chamorah singer. And just seeing her growing up and seeing her with the last surviving Mr., Uncle Ben Meno, really brought a lot of memories back. So prior to joining, prior to joining Kaha in 2016, I’ve worked with the government, Guam Department of Education for nearly twenty-five, so I have accumulated nearly twenty-five years of experience working with the government of Guam. And as everybody here have mentioned everything about, and Jackie has, Ms. Jackie has indicated, all of my work, and then everyone here, what I want to talk to you, and I think what I want to tell you guys, I had this speech all written up, but then everybody said everything that was written in my speech. So I want to tell you, if I am confirmed as the Director, my plans and my goal, I’ve even started, is I have a heart for the menomcos, deep passionate hearts. I want to work with the masters, the folk art, the traditional. I want to bring that up, revive it, and work, and that is the same message that I’m hearing from the board. And the next biggest passion is, yes, our youth, our younger generation. We all now don’t live forever. I’ve already reached out, made my team, my staff and I have made that collaborative effort in speaking to organizations that, the Millennium Artists. We plan to, if everything works well in August, to have a very unique show. My goal and my passion for Kaha is to be up there in the higher elevation. I want to work harder and smarter. I try, I always tell the team, I am a very different director. I am all hands-on. I don’t sit behind my desk, and I just don’t attend a lot of meetings. I give a lot of guidance, I give a lot of my expertise thoughts, but I also ask the staff, help me help you. I won’t know what you, what we need, or what you want to do, speak your mind and tell me. And believe it or not, I hear it all the time. From seven o’clock in the morning all the way until 5:00 PM. I do have an open door policy for everybody and anybody. Artisans come in, I welcome them in, I hear them, I listen. The biggest part of being a Director for our agency is listening to what the artisans, when they taught, listening to their needs, listening to their concern, as well as the staff. So in all of that, Senators, I would like to say, if I am confirmed, I guarantee you, I won’t let you down, because I do not want my Uncle Victor coming after me. Trust me, he will. So you can guarantee that. And Sisus Maasi for giving me the time. And I will email you my testimonial.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Taitegui. Senator Taitegui?
I already know.
Plenty Taitegui here.
Love it, seeing it all. Even the Perris back there has that Taitegui blood in him too as well. And for the record, she is my relative. Both of them are, very, very related. Taitegui is a very small family, and we’re all one family connected. That’s one thing about Taitegui. And for those who are listening, Taitegui is real Chamorah, very Chamorah. It’s not Spanish, it’s Chamorah, and it means no replacement. So I hope you, you keep to our name of being no replacement, that you become an exceptional Director, that when you retire, it’s going to be very difficult, that no replacement could take, take your position. So we’re going to, and, and that’s why probably I’m going to be hardest, the hardest one on you, because of that, unfortunately. You’re going to hear the grunt when it comes to me, because like I said earlier, I’m, I’m the biggest fan of Kaha, always have been, you know, with the arts. And my concern here is just, you know, finding a stable place for your home, for a Kaha. It’s really, really needed. It’s been, you’ve gone from everywhere, from Tumon to Two Lovers Point, to, there was another couple, a couple other places, and then now you’re over at the DNA building. So you, you definitely need a home, and I, I truly feel that you should be housed under the museum, where you should be. That’s a great place for you to do it. So, you know, Angie, we’re, I’m going to try with the Oversight Chair to see if we can get a space for Kaha, a home for Kaha at the Guam Museum, and be able to showcase our artists. I, I’ve been talking to you about the Masters Program, and this is something that has fallen down, you know, has not been up and going since COVID, and, and it’s even before COVID. Do you feel that the Masters Program, because the Masters Program talks about the Chamorah Arts, all about Chamorah, weaving, singing, dancing. Do you think this should be under Kaha, or should it go to the Chamorah Affairs?
I think it still should be Kaha. It was born by Kaha, and it should stay with Kaha. That’s my wholeheartedly feeling. I think that the Masters Program, it just needs, it just needs some revitalization in it to be done. It just needs amended verbiage, a little bit, maybe, but I do want to tell you, Senator Telo, that the board, you know, we’re moving on, and we’re going to have, we’re going to open the nomination for, starting this year. All the details and everything will be forthcoming, and, you know, we’re going to open up that nomination, and I know we had a very lengthy discussion yesterday during the board meeting, and so as soon as we put everything into play, and the resolution is all done and everything, I’m sure you guys will be hearing in regards to it. But I honestly think that because, you know, just like what Mark, Mark Mayor said, you know, don’t reinvent the wheel, just fix the flat tire, keep letting it spin. So because the Masters Program was born and originated with Kaha, it should stay with Kaha.
Okay. But then I suggest that you at least collaborate with, with Department of Chamorah Affairs.
Yes.
You know, at least bring them in the fold, have that discussion about where it should be. I mean, I know that, now I know your position there. But you know, we did meet a while ago regarding the Masters Program, and we did speak about Angie, the verbiage that’s needed, you know, to put things in place, and I have yet to see it. Have you submitted that verbiage? It’s been a while already.
We are still working on it. There, the board and I, we’re still going over some, some, you know, laws that we want to make sure, and some what the, you know, implementations, or what they would like to see in it. I know Master Frank Ribon is, is overseeing this, so, you know, we’re working on it, and you will be seeing it soon.
Okay. It’s just, it’s like a deadline, and you told me April.
Yes.
So that’s just around the corner.
Yes.
I remember that.
Yes.
And so I’m going to hold you to that, Angie.
Yes, ma’am.
I just have to walk downstairs from my office and.
I know.
You know, copula you, so.
Yes. I’m working on it, trust me.
Now, my next question is regarding the board and your position. And do you know that the, the last Director of Kaha had an issue with some of the things that the board had? So what do you see the board as? Is it a governing board, a policy board, or what is the board’s responsibility when it comes to your position?
And first, coming into Kaha, I read, I studied, just before I was interviewed, when I was going to, during the interview process, I went through and I read all the law, what is Kaha, who is Kaha, what, everything about Kaha. So I knew that Kaha had a governing board. Our previous Director, you know, I had informed her that the board was a governing board. I know that they’re a governing board. And I do a lot of collaboration with them, I send out emails to them, I text them, you know, even late at night, I text the chairperson, asking her a question, you know, my mind twirls at night, and then I have a question, the communication is there. Yes, I do know that they are definitely our governing board, and I don’t plan to see any issues with me working with them, because I always take something that if someone has an, I don’t want to say an attitude, but something, I take everything that gets given to me as a, a learning experience. If you, in Chamorah, they say la lot di mine, I, I listen, and I take it as, okay, it’s a learning experience that, okay, let’s listen out their point, let me say, but, you know, I will say my piece, and then, but I will also, just give me, tell me why, tell me the reason. But I do know that they are a governing board, and I, my, I respect them, because they are there to help me make sure my galide doesn’t sink.
Oh, nicely said.
Yeah.
Did you hear that? Her galide does not sink. Biba, biba Taitegui, you know.
There.
That, that was a great ending. Okay. Thank you. Of course, you know, you have my support. I don’t, I don’t, he knows that, I never say that when I’m doing a public hearing, give my support to anybody. You have to wait to the, to the session, but of course, I’ve seen you work. I am going to be hard on you. I will go and see you, because you’re easy access. But please, you know, the Masters Program, I’m pushing hard on that.
Yes.
Okay?
I will, I’m.
And a home, and a home for Kaha. We need a home for Kaha.
Yes, definitely, definitely, Senator.
Okay, those two things.
Yes. Thank, I will.
Okay. I’ll hold you to it. And thank you to your family who’s allowing you to sit in this position too.
Thank you.
Miss Tha.
Sisus Maasi, Senator Taitegui. Don’t reinvent the galide. Ms. Taitegui, if you could, and those are two areas that I’m impressed with your support of, is reopening the Masters and putting out the call for that program, and then also finding a home, whether it’s a less temporary home or a more permanent one, depending on how you look at it. So that being said, I know we had our informational hearing a little while ago, and there was discussion again about involving the museum and the Department of Chamorah Affairs, maybe giving you guys a space. Have you had any of those discussions, or are those in the works?
Mr. Chair, no, I have not yet. I plan to meet with the Director of the Guam Museum real soon. I, you know, we’ll call him up and ask him if we can have a meeting, and we can do some discussion, but I would also like to, you know, get the opinion and the senses of the board as well. So I, I want to do like a, I want to say, I want to get the senses from my staff, I want to get this, then, and the senses from the board, and then, you know, then bring it to, and get the senses of the Director of Chamorah Affairs as well, on how do they feel, you know? That’s where I’m at now, but I do plan to meet with Melvid and discuss, you know, what is an option for us.
Okay. And then on the language, right, amending the, the Masters Program, send it on over, and we’ll, we’ll get it introduced, we’ll work on that.
We’ll do, definitely.
Something the committee is definitely committed to do.
Yes, I am working on that.
Ms. Taitegui, I think one thing that separates you from a lot of the nominees for Directors of Agencies that come through the Guam Congress Hall is, Kalen, start it from the bottom.
Yes.
I mean, you entered your employment, your career with Kaha in 2016 as a, a program coordinator. Oh, I’m sorry, and yes, as a program coordinator. And so you’ve kind of done a lot of different things based on the testimony we’ve heard. So I would just ask, how do you think that experience helps you in your possible tenure as Director of Kaha?
All of that, and all the experience I’ve gained is, I got to see, you know, the wants and the needs of our community. I want, I got to see all of our artisans here, our, our communities, our menomcos, our younger generation, I got to see their needs, what they want for our island, and it’s, we’re all in the same, you know? We have that compassion that we want our island to grow, and at the same time, I feel for them, because, you know, a lot of them use their talents and their skills to make their extra income that is needed. And I try, and I give that avenue to them. I, when I hear something, I reach out, you know, and I say, hey, I’ll promote this on our social media, you know? And then I also, I speak on the behalf of those, of, of those that can’t speak, and which, you know, are menomcos. I say, okay, even our underserved communities, I bring in the artisans to them. When the grant cycle starts, and I see a whole handful of grants with the limited money that we get the funding from NEA, I kind of ask them, I says, can you redo your grant application to focus it and help those in the underserved community? I am a very compassionate person. I look and I listen to, and I see what opportunities I can give everybody here, you know, that comes to Kaha and knocks on my door and says, how can you help me? You know, and I says, let me see what I can do. Let me see, you know, and I bring in those in my office that have been there the longest, and I says, okay, Mr. So-and-so, you know, is asking for this, how can we help him? How can we help him? Give me that avenue. Or if I may suggest this, do you think this will work? I want to try to take this on, you know? And my staff knows that no is never an answer for me. If there's a will, there is a way, you know, so. I plan to do a lot.
I know that you, in your testimony, you have a lot of focus on the young artists. So what would you say to young artists, you know, of all disciplines who are watching this hearing right now? What's your message to them?
I welcome them, I invite them. We now, I started this, I just sent a team, our two coordinators over to the Tezen Hyde. They had a boot camp there, Career Day Boot Camp. And so Kaha was invited, and I sent our, I sent two of our program coordinators up there and talk about Kaha, what is Kaha about? And, you know, when feedback I got from them was, from the staff was, oh my gosh, a lot of them didn't know that Kaha ever existed. And I knew that because a few years before COVID, we did, we presented up there at the Agania Shopping Center. And it was youth day, there was an event with the youth there. A lot of the youth were coming in, artists, and they said, wow, wow. I didn't know this was. So I started passing out our artist directory. Say, sign up, sign up for Kaha so you'll be more made more. Some of those artisans are now part of the artists of Kaha. They now, you know, participate, they help. And so I have, what I want to do is, and I've told the staff this, we need the younger generations to come in. When I saw the artwork at CL Titanol, I said, so I talked to our program gallery coordinator, and I says, I want to bring that here. I want to bring all of those kids' work here to the gallery. I change up the gallery image. I'm doing a variety of gallery show. I want to bring in the younger generation, which I am working with an organization now to try to do something a lot different with artwork in media arts. But through the 18 to 35-year-old category. It's going to be very different and unique. So, you know, something to look out, look forward. But the younger, I want more collaborations with the schools. And that is our plan. If we know something's happening out there, you know, and we get invited, I send the staff, we got a feedback from Tezen Hyde that they are inviting us back. You know, that's a very, that opens the door for us. I still have a heart for DOE because I spent most of my years at DOE. Although I think DOE, Kaha, and the whole community of Guam and artisans can really make Guam beautiful.
Thank you for that. I was just looking over your packet here. Are you still a member of the Democratic Party of Guam Central Executive Committee?
I don't know. I am a Democrat though. I am a full-hearted Democrat. I did not submit my packet on time, I believe. I'm not, I was off island due to family medical, personal. And I know the deadline has came and gone, I think.
So this is just prior experience?
These are all prior, yes.
How would you describe your relationship with the board? I know you touched on it a little bit before. But in a, on a perfect island, how do you feel you can work with the board to get the best advantage for the arts?
On a perfect island, huh? A perfect? Okay, so in a perfect island, I would like to say, okay, this is what I want to do. This is why I want to do it. Can I get your vote? Oh, sure, no problem. That's a perfect island. Although, I love my board now because I like to hear that. Don't just agree because I say it, right? Give me my reasons why I can't do it. I may not know all the laws, right? But you may, they may know the laws. You know, bang my hands and say, stop, you can't do that, you know? And at the same time, hear me too, because I do study the law, I do know the law. I may not say it to you right there and then, but I read up over and over and over. I even bother the compiler of law if I have a question. I call over there and I ask a question. I bothered, senators, I went to your office too, by the way, when you weren't there. The door was locked. I went up and bothered the other senators as well. I just had a question on certain laws, certain amendments, you know? I ask questions, I am not afraid to speak. And like I've always told my children and my staff, prove me wrong. And I will be the first to tell you, I'm sorry. But if I say, you know, this is based on a law, and if they say, no, 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 says it, then prove me wrong, and I will tell you, I'm sorry. I'm not afraid to say I made that mistake. I'm not.
Well, Ms. Tidigui, I like what I'm hearing this morning. I know when I first got into office, there was a little hiccup with the leadership at Kaha. But I have to say that I'm impressed with the direction the agency is heading. And I know that we have the challenges, right, with the home and the Master of the Arts Program. But I'm encouraged by the diversity of the exhibits that you've had at the gallery to include painting and now, you know, jewelry and body ornamentation. Also, your efforts on the dance front, I think are very refreshing. And I think that that's another way to get the presence of Kaha out into the villages and all over the island. I did kind of touch on this with the previous nominee, and I'm sure you're aware, in fact, we spoke about it. The current controversy that's facing your agency, Madam Director, if you could, give us the history of this issue and then your thoughts on it and the status of where we are now.
Senator, with due respect, I wish not to make any comment with the current issue that's on the front page of the PDN. And I am though, I have sought legal guidance from the Attorney General of Guam, Doug Moylan, Mr. Moylan. I am waiting to hear back from them before I would like to make any statement of comment at this time on that matter.
Well, let's keep it general then. So in a situation like this, what is the process of the relationship with you and the board? For example, if there's a group that's not happy with something and they bring it to the attention of the director, what do you then bring to the board?
Well, I would bring it to the board and I would tell, I would ask the board. I says, we need to come together, we need to decide on this matters as a group, you know, as a body. We need to all be in consensus of this, in, you know, whether each, what direction we want to go, yea or nay, you know? We all have to be on the same page and not all, one say this, or two say that and that, and not resolve it. It needs to be resolved, one way or another. And I am one to step up for the agency, you know? And if the board says, okay, Madam Director, this is how it's going to be, now this is what it's going to be, I will. You know, I will step up there and I will do what I have to do and say what I have to say.
Does this controversy trouble you with the attention, the attention negative or otherwise that it's getting? I understand that even the FESPA organizers in Hawaii have been made aware of this petition that's circulating relative to the removal of a member of the FESPA delegation.
It does bother me, although, all I want is, I want Guam to be represented well. I just want to, all of us go over there, have a peaceful, wonderful FESPA, and have Guam shine. You know, this is what I'm looking for, is to have Guam really showcased. Because remember, it's the Olympics of art. So I don't want anything to steal the opportunity of all of these artisans going out there to be robbed of this, of anything. You know, this is where us here in the community, we need to come together because we're going over there to represent us, the people of Guam, who, our talents, our culture, our experience, and who we are here in Guahan. You know, I just want peace and harmony as we head over to Hawaii for the 13th Festival of the Pacific Arts.
Very well said, Mrs. Tidigui. And I am in complete agreement with you. And that's why, just for the record, I've approached the board and asked them to address this as quickly as possible. And we're all praying for a resolution that satisfies everybody, so. Ma'am, I'm very encouraged by your testimony here this morning. Full disclosure, I know that we sat down, and yes, we are related as well. Okay, through the Krosostamo and the Menno, so.
Yes.
Man parente stole it, like. Okay, so if there's no further testimony, the committee will continue to receive testimony on the nomination of both Mr. Mendiola and Mrs. Tidigui as director of Kaha. And you can email that testimony or drop it off, yes ma'am?
Before we close, I just want to say one big thing. Ondankulu na Sisus Maasi to each and every one of you that were here for my support and for all the wonderful testimony. And to you, you two, for sticking out, and to all of the senators out there. Ondankulu na Sisus Maasi.
Hau galukui, Mrs. Tidigui, thank you. And again, we'll continue to accept testimony. You can email it or drop it off here at the office. We're located on the second floor of the Guam Congress Hall. Or you can email the testimony to malafunkshun.org. That's M-A-L-A-F-U-N-K-S-H-U-N dot org. Thank you all for your participation. Have a very loving Valentine's Day. Todugna guinaidza, bula guinaidza, hunkuaiza ha'Guam. Guahu si Senator Chris Malafunkshe Barnett, esta adios.